I'm sorry, did you say okay? Thank you, thank you. Councilors, we begin to find our seats. We're going to start the meeting. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Check, check. Now we can. They're telling me to use the gavel. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Barnstable Town Council Meeting, April 27, 2023. It's just after 6 o'clock. Appreciate everybody being here and appreciate everybody in staff making the time to stop this meeting an hour early so that we can accomplish as much as we can tonight through the budget process. So with that, could we have the roll call, please? Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Counselors. Etslis.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Cuzak.
Present.
Rap Kersetti.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Ludke.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary. Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber. You have 11.
Thank you. If we could all please rise and we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and please remain standing for the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You can be seated. And now is the time, and we have a full house, is now a time for public comment, and we hear something that's fairly new, is we have public comment for those that are here in the hearing room, and we also give the opportunity for people to participate via remote. And so at this point in time, I would entertain anybody in the audience here. If you could come to the pulpit, state your name, sign in, and I should say, sign in, then state your name, and you would have three minutes, and then I will go and ask Director Poignan if there's anybody who would like to participate remotely, so, in an orderly fashion.
Yes, I've already signed in.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you. President Levek and members of Town Council, my name is Suzanne Conley. I live here year-round in Barnstable, and I'm the chairperson of an ad hoc, all-volunteer community organization, Save Greater Douses Beach. We oppose Avengrid Renewables' plan to land three electrical export cables at Douses Beach. We have never expressed opposition to offshore wind or the inevitable transition to renewable energy. However, we are opposed to the reckless endangerment of coastal zone areas and resources to develop new infrastructure when much better options exist. On March 10th, our group submitted to the Town Clerk's office a petition signed by 200 registered Barnstable voters that asked the council to commit by vote to the preservation of Article 97 protections of Douses and its causeway. Our petition was denied because it asked for a vote, so we will resubmit it with modified language. But our group has also decided that the issue should come before you regularly while the developer persists in the permitting process despite uncertainty about the financial viability of their project or the outcome of a new round of 83C bidding on power purchase agreements. We call it Greater Douses because it is much more than a straight-line beach. It is an S.H.I.E.L.D.-reen environment that includes a barrier spit, a dune system, a double embayment, an inlet, a boat launch, a mooring field, a handicapped accessible fishing pier, and an unofficial but de facto wildlife sanctuary. Because of its unique nature, it is a year-round destination for people from every one of the seven villages of Barnstable. Recently, I heard our group referred to dismissively as "50 angry people." That is a gross misunderstanding of the extent of opposition in this town to this project. The thought of this precious Nantucket Sound treasure subjected to maybe three years of industrial construction and its permanent transformation into electrical infrastructure is to hundreds, even thousands, of Barnstable residents inconceivable. We have three concerns we'll discuss with you in the coming months. First, the dangers posed to the environment, including the sole aquifer. Second, the disruption to and loss of wildlife that make this area home. Third, the well-being, health, and safety of the people who visit Douses not only during three years of construction, but for the life of the proposed offshore wind project. In the coming months, the professionally accomplished members of our steering committee will offer additional public comment. In 1946, the town meeting voted unanimously to purchase the entire parcel from the Douse family for $30,000 for the, quote, "purposes of a bathing beach," end quote. Improvements by the town, such as the breakwater, paved causeway, parking lot, and fishing pier, have created one of Barnstable's best assets. When the time comes, please honor the investment and commitment of our predecessors in this town and say, Barnstable has done our part, and Douses is one sacrifice too many. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Conley.
Hi, my name is Amy Mezaro. I'm president of Friends of Long Pond Marston's Mills. Some of you may recall, soon after we formed in late 2019, we expressed our concern via letter and comments at a Town Council meeting about pond closures due to cyanobacteria blooms. But the fact that our pond is compromised is not new information. A 2008 study that the town commissioned showed that our pond is unhealthy.
Excuse me, Ms. Mezaro. Can you just speak into the microphone, please, so we can hear you? Thank you.
A 2008 study conducted for the town by S.M.A.S.T., considered Long Pond unhealthy due to phosphorus concentrations that were double the threshold for a healthy pond ecosystem, and also due to low water clarity levels as measured with a SECHI disc. Now, we've known that residents have a role to play in addressing this problem, and Friends of Long Pond Marston's Mills has worked hard to educate homeowners about how to reduce the flow of phosphorus above and below ground into our pond. They've curtailed fertilizer, herbicide, and pesticide use. They take steps to prevent failure of septic systems. We bring toxic chemicals to the transfer station on hazardous waste collection day, et cetera. We've also partnered with the town by hiring APCC to do cyanobacteria monitoring and communicating those results to our neighbors and DPW. At DPW's request, we've purchased a dissolved oxygen monitor and SECHI discs to conduct our own additional testing and report the results to DPW. We've done research, identified vendors, and arranged joint meetings, most recently for floating treatment wetlands. We've sought grant money, and we communicate with residents about town activities. Now, the town has taken action, and we appreciate that response, but we're concerned with repeated delays, and we feel the need to be hyper vigilant. Our pond was selected for a study during the summer of 2021, with a report expected in April 2022 and a solution to be implemented in the spring of 2023. The report was delayed by seven months, and 92 residents signed a letter expressing their concern with the delay. Now, as a result of the report, DPW feels floating treatment wetlands would be the most effective solution. We and our neighbors are overwhelmingly supportive of this solution. Our only disappointment is that the deployment of floating treatment wetlands will be delayed to the spring of 2024. But we're pleased to have just heard that a funding appropriation order will go before the Town Council at its next meeting, and we sincerely hope there won't be any additional delays in the many steps in the process of implementing the solution. We know that there are many ponds and lakes in the town of Barnstable that have compromised water, but Long Pond has been at the top of the list for pond closures and warnings for the past four years. We've known about this problem for 15 years. Our neighbors are frustrated and impatient for a solution. We ask you to give our pond a high priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mezaro.
Mr. Anderson.
Good to see you.
I'm Emery Anderson, Dr. Emery Anderson. I'm retired professional fisheries scientist, past president of the Indian Ponds Association, and I live in Marston's Mills, and I want to speak in support of the alum treatment for Mystic Lake. Why is this so important? Well, Mystic is one of those lakes that unfortunately has a lot of phosphorus in its sediments. This is serious because when that phosphorus moves up into the water, it becomes available for growing algae. Particularly in recent years, we're most familiar with cyanobacteria that's harmful to humans. We funded two scientific studies, and over 20 years of water quarterly monitoring of these, well, not just Mystic, but the other two Indian ponds, so we pretty much know where the phosphorus came from and how much is due to what. Over three-fourths of the phosphorus in Mystic Lake in the sediments is deemed to have come from external sources, but it's been there for a long time. The more recent introduction is probably less than 10% from septics and maybe less than 10% from waterfall. So where did all this phosphorus come from? We're pretty sure that the bulk of it came from the old Hoard Dairy Farm, which was right across the street from the pond, right adjacent to where the airfield is. 92 acres of farm, over 150 head of dairy cows, a lot of super phosphate put on those acres to grow grain and feed for the cattle. So between that and the manure from the cattle that used to come down and water in the pond itself, we're pretty sure that over the years, a lot of this phosphorus has leached into the lake. The problem is, once it's in the lake, it doesn't leave, just doesn't magically go. So in order to prevent it from causing damage, you have to control it, and the most cost-effective way of doing so is with so-called alum treatment. What alum does, it binds with the phosphorus forms precipitate, locks that in the bottom of the pond, and will hold it there. Now, it doesn't do it forever, because in a deep lake like Mystic, Hamlin is the same. In the warm summer months, you lose oxygen at the bottom. You've got bacteria growing, chewing up detritus. There's no sunlight at the bottom, so pretty soon, there's no photosynthesis. That then causes this precipitate to break apart, phosphorus moves back up in the water column, and voila, you have algal blooms.
Mr. Anderson, can I ask you to wrap it up, please?
Yep, I will. So as I said, a treatment like this doesn't last for more than about 15 years. Mystic was treated 12, 13 years ago now. Hamlin, as I've mentioned, was treated twice, both very successful, and I really would ask, this council and its predecessor members have funded all of these previous requests because they've seen the problem, and we're trusting that you're going to do the same in this case. We do not want to see another massive kill that, back in 2010, shortly before the treatment on Mystic, over 24 million mussels were killed, many of them were endangered species. So, as I've said many times to your town manager, you need to view lakes like this as part of your infrastructure, and just like you'd put money into roads and buildings, you need to invest in the lakes. They're very important. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Engels. I'm a longtime volunteer for the Mass Breast Cancer Coalition and a Cape Cod resident. I'm here with the Mass PFAS and Your Health Study to ask for the council's continued support. For those who don't know, PFAS is the name of a group of what's called forever chemicals. They don't break down over time the way other materials do. High levels of PFAS were found in Hyannis water supply in the past, and I'd like to thank the town of Barnstable for all the work that it's done to treat the contamination and to remove the PFAS from the water in the years since. While we can't change exposures that has already happened, we can still learn from them. The Mass PFAS and Your Health Study will help scientists better understand how exposures to these chemicals can affect our health. We're lucky to have Dr. Laurel Shader and her research team from Silent Spring Institute in Harvard leading the efforts here in Hyannis. I know Dr. Shader has spoken to the council before, and Councilwoman Ludke has given a recent update that our study is well short of the number of people it needs to enroll in Hyannis. The deadline for the study has been extended from May to September. So have the other six study sites nationwide. There is still so much we don't know about how PFAS affects us. This is our chance to learn the unknowns and to understand what that exposure means for all of us. But in order to do that, we still need a lot more help. We need a lot more people to sign up. I want to thank everyone who's enrolled in the study and who has helped recently with our recruiting participants. I'm also asking for the council's continued support in reaching out to Barnstable. It would be a great help if you could share materials about the study when you meet with your own faith or community groups. Ask Dr. Shader to come and speak and give presentations to your groups. Use social media or newsletters that you already are using to help us network and get the word out. Sorry, I'm getting nervous. I did not expect all these people. We've been organizing door-to-door canvassing efforts in Hyannis, and if you could join us, our next one is Saturday, May 20. We'll be canvassing most weekends this summer. Working together, we can make this study part of a better future for the residents of Barnstable and their health, and we thank you for all your past and your present support. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see by the applause, this is a safe place.
Good evening. My name is Curtis Barnes. I live in Nantucket. I just got off the ferry, and I am sponsoring an article at Town Meeting next week to establish a Town Council in place of our annual Town Meeting. I have been studying the Barnstable Town Council for several years. I was on the Town Government Study Committee. I've met with some of your administrators, and I simply want to compliment you on the excellent kind of government you have with this great turnout tonight, which I have never seen at any of our board meetings, and I just want to say that you have created a model that we are really going to try to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I think it's full because we're spending everybody's money tonight, so.
Hi, I'm Jerry Anderson. I'm from Marston's Mills, and Emery Anderson happens to be my husband. Emery and I have been working to try to keep the Indian ponds healthy, and I started the newsletter back in 2000 and was the editor for 10 years. We just have been really passionate about saving these lakes. As you know, Emery just talked about why we have so much phosphorus in Mystic Lake, and if you think about each cow producing 15 ton of manure every year, and that phosphorus goes very slowly through the groundwater, through the land, and it ends up in the deepest part of the lake. Emery was just reading a book that Holly Hobart had recommended to us. She was a former president, and it's called "The Devil's Element." I hope you'll all write that down and get the book and read it. They're referring to phosphorus, and it is a horrible thing. It can be good, but it's really pretty bad. Anyway, Emery and I were out on the lake, on Mystic Lake, back in 2009 at the end of the summer, doing our regular pond testing. We did it every week, or every other week during the summer months, and I noticed a terrible, terrible smell. It was like death. I can't explain it, and I looked around, and there were no seabirds, no birds of any kind, none. We usually saw something. And we did our pond study, and we went back home. In the next morning, we went down by the lake, and there were piles and piles of mussels. We had a group come in called Biodiversity, Ralversity, and they did a study, and they discovered that we had lost 24 million mussels in that die-off. We had been trying to get an alum treatment. The town had approved it, but we weren't able to do it because the person in charge of the mussels at the, what is it, Natural Heritage, said she was worried that if we put alum in there, the mussels might be hurt. Well, there were three endangered species before the die-off. Now we have two endangered species. I think it's not just nice if you would do the alum treatment. I think it's imperative. You have to do this because of, we don't want to lose any more endangered species. We don't want to lose a couple more million mussels. They are coming back, but we have to take care of the pond, and we have to do this in a timely manner, and I really appreciate all your help. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
With permission of the president, I'd like to hand these out to the selectmen. Just a very quick handout.
Sure, do you want to give it to the Town Clerk, and she'll hand it on down? Thank you, sir.
My name is Cliff Carroll. I'm a long-term resident of Barnstable. I live in West Barnstable now, and I'm actually not part of the, I support the Douses Beach group, but I'm here actually to talk about We Quocket Lake, and I'm here to talk about the ongoing contracts that the town has with the Avengrid. So what I would like to do, when that gets handed out, I'll talk about this actual document if I can. First of all, the main reason I'm here tonight is in reference to the Craigville Beach Motel site. I attended the Cape Cod Commission Subcommittee Hearing Tuesday night, and I was kind of surprised to find that they really hadn't looked at the danger to the water. I know that we're doing triple containment, everything else on it, and again, when everybody has one of these, I will hand them out, and I apologize if it's a couple short. At that meeting, a couple things came up. First of all, and this is very important, the town of Barnstable, through Charlie McLaughlin, attorney McLaughlin, and through Elizabeth Jenkins, the other night at the Subcommittee Hearing, they reserved the right to continue commenting to Cape Cod Commission. Cape Cod Commission, right now, is slated to make a decision on the site on May 11th. So my number-one first request would be that the Town Council allows the public of Barnstable to comment either through Charlie or to get comments to Elizabeth, so that we can get our comments into the Cape Cod Commission, because their decision, their draft decision, left out many, many things. The other thing, before I get cut off on time, is that, from what I understand, and kind of casually through different meetings, that the current negotiation contract host agreement for the Douses Beach project is supposedly on hold, and I was wondering if the Town Council could verify that tonight in response to the public comment, so that we all feel a little bit better about it, and when that does come back to negotiation, if we could potentially have some type of public input on that contract rather than just have it done and then all of a sudden it arrives and we don't see what's on it, because we're finding out through Cape Cod Commission that we didn't cover enough things to protect our water. I'm going to go through this right now because I know I'm running short on time. What we have here, anybody in the crowd who's pretty familiar with Independence Park and the substations being built up there, there's actually a substation that's going to be built that's actually larger than that at the site of the Craigville Beach Motel on Shoe Flying Hill Road. That site is actually upgradient of We Quocket Lake Water Recharge Zones and also zones contribution in the town of Barnstable. Everybody's talking about the town's protecting itself with triple protection and everything else, and when I went to the Subcommittee Hearing the other night, they were talking about Garrett's Pond, which is on the other side of the Mid-Cape Highway. They didn't even mention We Quocket Lake. In this document here, the very first page, you see the transformer site. Down below, you see the large blow-up of We Quocket Lake, We Quocket Lake being the second-largest lake, a big contributor to our freshwater, and it goes down a river out to the Centerville River. The second page is a little more important. The second page shows the transformer site, and using Google Earth, you can actually measure distances. Cape Cod Commission talked about a vernal pond somewhere that's 300 feet away. If you look at this, you're going to see that there are cranberry bogs, large bogs that butt We Quocket Lake that are only 226 yards downhill from the site.
I'm sorry, Cliff, you're at four minutes already. If you can just hurry a little more for me.
Okay, I was waiting for the handle.
I'm sorry about that. I know, I'm like the executioner.
I'll make it real quick.
It's crazy.
Next page, the bog, five-foot-wide aqueduct that feeds right into We Quocket Lake, downgradient from it. In closing, I just want to say, if there is a way that we can have that contract, the third contract, open and negotiated, or at least have the public be given notice when they re-initiate that contract, it would be great, because we have a lot of insufficiencies in the review with the Cape Cod Commission. Town of Barnstable only has until May 11th to get further comment in there, and it's tough to defend a thing in three minutes, but thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Just a quick response to that. Mr. Carroll, just a quick response to that. Is nothing going on in regards to talks to a host agreement in regards to Douses Beach or anything Commonwealth Wind or anything like that? And of course, it would be announced that it would be rebooted here at this meeting, so it would be very public. to comment either through Charlie or to get comments to Elizabeth, so that we can get our comments into the Cape Cod Commission, because their decision, their draft decision left out many, many things. The other thing, before I get cut off on time, is that, from what I understand, and kind of casually through different meetings, that the current negotiation contract host agreement for the Douses Beach project is supposedly on hold. And I was wondering if the town council could verify that tonight in response to the public comment, so that we all feel a little bit better about it. And when that does come back to negotiation, if we could potentially have some type of public input on that contract, rather than just have it done, and then all of a sudden it arrives, and we don't see what's on it, because we're finding out through Cape Cod Commission that we didn't cover enough things to protect our water. I'm going to go through this right now, because I know I'm running short on time. What we have here, anybody in the crowd who's pretty familiar with Independence Park and the substations being built up there, there's actually a substation that's going to be built that's actually larger than that at the site of the Craigville Beach Motel on Shute Flying Hill Road. That site is actually upgradient of We Quocket Lake Water Recharge Zones and also zones contribution in the town of Barnstable. Everybody's talking about the town's protecting itself with triple protection and everything else. And when I went to the Subcommittee hearing the other night, they were talking about Garrett's Pond, which is on the other side of the Mid-Cape Highway. They didn't even mention We Quocket Lake. In this document here, the very first page, you see the transformer site. Down below, you see the large blow-up of We Quocket Lake. We Quocket Lake being the second-largest lake, a big contributor to our freshwater, and it goes down a river out to the Centerville River. The second page is a little more important. The second page shows the transformer site, and using Google Earth, you can actually measure distances. Cape Cod Commission talked about a vernal pond somewhere that's 300 feet away. If you look at this, you're going to see that there are cranberry bogs, large bogs that butt We Quocket Lake, that are only 226 yards downhill from the site.
I'm sorry, Cliff, you're at four minutes already. If you can just hurry a little more for me.
Okay, I was waiting for the handle.
I'm sorry about that. I know, I'm like the executioner.
I'll make it real quick.
It's crazy.
Next page, the bog, five-foot-wide aqueduct that feeds right into We Quocket Lake, downgradient from it. In closing, I just want to say, if there is a way that we can have that contract, the third contract, open and negotiated, or at least have the public be given notice when they re-initiate that contract, it would be great, because we have a lot of insufficiencies in the review with the Cape Cod Commission. Town of Barnstable only has until May 11th to get further comment in there. And it's tough to defend a thing in three minutes, but thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Just a quick response to that. Mr. Carroll, just a quick response to that. There's nothing going on in regards to talks to a host agreement in regards to Douses Beach, or anything Commonwealth Wind or anything like that. And of course, it would be announced that it would be rebooted here at this meeting, so it would be very public once, just like it was the last time. That's okay. No, I'm just giving you a response to your question. We'll, we'll, we can talk about that some other time, but that's part of the process. You can come here and speak three minutes, anytime you'd like, about any topic, so, thank you. Mr. Nizwiki, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Nizwiki. I am the CEO of the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, West Barnstable resident, and I'm here tonight because I know later on in your very full agenda, you have the amendment of the agreement with the Steamship Authority. And I just wanted to speak in favor of that agreement. You know, I've had the opportunity, really back in 1998, as Chief of Staff for the Cape Pen Island Senator, Rochenbach, at the time, when New Bedford was talked about as a potential site for freight, and we looked economically at what that would mean to the region. And it was quite devastating at the time. I had the opportunity since then to work as the Assistant Town Manager here in the town, and work with the Steamship Authority on the extension of the walkway to the sea, and the removal of some of the blighted properties that were down next to Baxter's, and the creation of that park. You know, there's always going to be disruption when you have a major working harbor surrounded by a residential neighborhood. But they have been, through the years, in my experience, sort of a good working partner, and someone that the town can work with on the really important issues around the harbor. I also have worked with them for 10 years at the Cape Cod Commission on traffic mitigation, not only in Hyannis, but in Woods Hole also. So I wanted to speak in favor of that, and just to sort of remind everyone that, you know, when the Cape was settled, it really was settled on the north side, along the bay. And it was when the railroads came in, and that railroad spike came down here, down Old Colony, down Harbor Road, and that freight went by the railway onto steamers that were owned by railroad companies back then. That kind of created Hyannis. You know, so this working harbor and our connection to Nantucket, economically and otherwise, is really part of the DNA of Hyannis. And so I think it's important to have a good, solid working relationship with the Steamship Authority. I know they want to have new boats permitted for freight that are a little bit longer, 10 feet, I believe, but they're better, they're safer for the environment, and they're safer for navigation purposes. They need to sort of upgrade the fleet, and we think this is an important addition. And I'll keep my comments brief, but I just, I think we all know, since the COVID-19 restrictions have been, were in place, and the pandemic had its impact on the Cape, we've seen tremendous changes. You know, it was in 2018, where the median value of a single-family home on the Cape was 380,000. It's currently 700,000. You know, and I think we, back in 2017, we were importing 25% of our workforce. We are now importing 50% of our workforce. If anyone's tried to cross the bridge with the maintenance that's going on, you can see the workforce. That's where it's at. And so much economic activity for Barnstable-based businesses, and Hyannis-owned businesses, and people that work good jobs, that have that connection, that economic connection to Nantucket, those are the people that we want to keep in our community while so many others are being forced to leave because of the cost of housing and other issues, because we've become such a popular place. So I hope that you approve the amendment tonight. I hope that you can work with the Steamship Authority moving forward to make Hyannis the place that it deserves to be, and to protect our residents and our middle class as you do that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Paul.
My name is Tony Shepley. I am actually here representing Shepley Wood Products, but I'm really here for something that has nothing to do with my business directly. I'm actually here for the same reason Mr. Nizwiki just spoke to you. I've had about 40 years' practice, and I know I look a little young for 40 years at anything, but I've had 40 years' practice going back and forth on the steamship. And I'll tell you, personally, I cannot wait to get a couple of new freight boats. These things look like they were designed by Cold War Russian naval architects. They're a little, little passed-by. The maneuverability of the new boats will be stunning compared to what we've had. The actual physical condition of them will be a pleasure. The capacity is slightly more, unfortunately, I wish it were a lot more, but it's not. It's about three trucks that you could put on in addition to what we already have. The emissions, there are no emissions on the current boats, no controls, they're so old. So we can modernize, we can sort of create a little bit of a future, and here's what's in it for the town of Barnstable. The economic impact of the Nantucket trade, I've had a chance to study firsthand. I've got 30 employees who are related to the business that just our company does on Nantucket, but there are plenty of others like me. I could bore you with the list, and I won't, because you know them. And all you have to do is come down to the docks and just see all the Kitchen Appliance Mart, you know, any of the businesses here in Hyannis. This isn't just pass-through. These are businesses that are starting here, where the freight starts here and goes to Nantucket. So it's a really important part of what we do. Paul was right. I asked that when you think about this vote, 10 feet, I'm six foot six, put three and a half feet on top of my head, that's what 10 feet is, not much. So 10 feet is what I think this vote boils down to. Let's keep that in mind. This town needs a stable economy, and we've been fighting a lot of hard battles recently. So it's probably not the time to, well, I would view it as shooting ourselves in the foot, but I'll leave it up to you to decide. Thank you for your consideration. This is a very important vote. Thank you.
Mr. Shepley, I just want to say that two Chris Clarks equals one Tony Shepley with three and a half feet tacked on.
Always been good at math.
Hi, I'm Bill Hearn. I'm a retired fisheries biologist and a member of the Indian Pond Association's Board of Directors. I'm speaking in behalf of the alum treatment for Mystic Lake. Mystic Lake is the second-largest lake in the town. It's second in size only to We Quocket. Mystic Lake is the headwaters of the Marston's Mills River, and together with Middle Pond, supports the largest run of river herring contained in the town of Barnstable. Something that's not well-known about Mystic Lake, although Jerry Anderson stole my fire a bit, is that it supports an especially diverse assemblage of freshwater mussels, including one of the three best tidewater muckit populations in Massachusetts, and one of the best lake populations of Triangle Floater. Those populations are of considerable interest to the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. And as she mentioned, these species are now rather uncommon or rare, and they are now undergoing recovery following a massive cyanobacteria bloom, or a very likely cyanobacteria bloom, that preceded the lake's last alum treatment in fall of 2010. Back then, there was, as she described, there was a lot of haggling over, you know, when are we going to do it? How, you know, how much should we put in there? And eventually, all of a sudden, wham, they died. They died in the summer of 2009, the summer of 2010, and then finally, in the fall of 2010, they do an alum treatment, kind of late. Something else that's not well-known about Mystic Lake is that it supports the only successful breeding pair of bald eagles on Cape Cod. Now, I will tell you, that's, that's really, that's really unusual, and for all I know, something's happened in the last couple of years. That's like two-years-old information. But that's really, that's kind of interesting. That's on Mystic Lake. Public access to these ponds, as well as private access afforded by several homeowners' associations, enable large numbers of Barnstable town residents and visitors to use the pond for swimming and boating and fishing. Unfortunately, the fish, wildlife, and important recreational resources afforded by Mystic Lake are threatened by ever-worsening cyanobacteria blooms each summer. You've heard that from Emery Anderson. It's due to a very high internal load of phosphorus, which is the nutrient that causes these blooms. And we know that very likely this phosphorus is due to the dairy farming that happened between the 1920s and the 1960s in that area. Emery had mentioned that. There is, as you all probably have your own copy, that 355-page capital budget for the town of Barnstable for 2024. And on page 108, I don't know who pulled that out, but there happens to be a technical report, and they provided graphs, which I'm familiar with, and it shows that the bottom concentrations of phosphorus, since the alum treatment, have been steadily rising, going up. You look at page 108, there it is, and it's like, it's getting high, and things are getting critical, and they're only going to get worse. We know that as scientists. And eventually, we're going to have a catastrophic die-off, again, and you could end up having, you know, fish kills in the lake, and there will certainly be a whole lot more postings and warnings for cyanobacteria, and you can't swim, and et cetera. I really hope it doesn't get to that point. You have a budget to do something.
Mr. Hearn, can I ask you to wrap it up, please? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just about done. Fall of 2024 is, you know, when you're potentially able to do that. I really hope we don't have that problem this summer. I hope that we don't have that massive die-off in the summer of 2024. So, you know, please, do fund this. It's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hearn.
Thank you for your service. I know you have a long night. My name's Chuck Tuttle, Centerville resident since 1964. My guess is that everybody in this room.
You just signed in, Mr. Tuttle?
I have.
Okay, great, thank you.
My guess is that everybody in this room is an advocate of clean energy. A developer, Avengrid, has secured the rights to build a wind farm south of Martha's Vineyard. The plan is for dozens of huge windmills to generate lots of electricity. Now the developer needs to find a place to bring that generated power ashore. They do not have the rights to tie into the grid at New Bedford, or Fairhaven, or Fall River, the obvious choices. So now their second choice, Falmouth. Falmouth said no. The town of Falmouth said no. You cannot bring your massive power cables ashore in our town. Good for Falmouth. Now the developer looks down the coast. Barnstable has said yes. You can bring your giant industrial power cables ashore at our beaches. This is the first project of its kind in the United States, so we are proud to be leaders in the clean energy world. You bet. But should we embrace and allow an industrial project to ply our residential neighborhoods at the expense of thousands of our residents, indeed our whole town, and perhaps our whole single-source aquifer, feeding the whole peninsula that we call Cape Cod? The cables Avengrid wants to bury beneath our residential streets carry 800 megawatts. That's not 80,000 watts. That's 800 million watts of electricity through our densely populated residential neighborhoods. Please keep in mind, this is the first project of its kind in the United States. 800 million watts of electricity, every hour, every day, forever. They want to pump this electrical power through our neighborhoods up to an electricity transfer substation at the top of Shute Flying Hill, which is upgradient from We Quocket Lake, its cranberry bogs, Garrett's Pond, and our single-source aquifer. I understand that there will be thousands of gallons of lubricants and industrial oils and fire retardant, and that these toxic chemicals will be stored on-site, upgradient from the lake, and our single-source aquifer. I understand that one of the local fire chiefs said that if an accident occurred, there's no way that they have the capacity to put out a fire created by so much power. So now what? So many unanswered questions. What is the plan in case of catastrophic failure of the substation? What fire retardant do they plan to use? It's toxic. How can we, in our right mind, allow 800 million watts of electricity through our residential neighborhoods to a site filled with toxic chemicals on a hill above our lake and ponds and aquifer? Remember, this is the first project of its kind in the United States. Perhaps I'm poorly informed, perhaps there's information that I do not have, perhaps this is all figured out, it's all rosy, and there's no issues or risks whatsoever. But we have a developer who is, according to Governor Healy, not living up to their promises.
Mr. Tuttle, can you?
So I implore town councilors, especially those from Centerville, Osserville, and West Barnstable, to file action with this legislative body to prohibit the town from entering into any new contracts, commitments, or agreements with this developer until all the questions are answered. Any unsigned contracts should remain unsigned until we have a plan. Please slow it down before we do irreparable damage to our beautiful villages, town, and indeed the whole county. Thank you for your time.
Is there, is there anybody else that would like to speak here in the, yes, sir?
My name is Jerry Vigil. I have, I do not have a written presentation, but I want to speak about the Twinbrooks Project. The AMC Corporation has built several of these projects, one of which is in Atlanta, and there's been a lot of concern about that. And I understand there's one in California, which the AMC Corporation, now Cotera, is suing the town. I don't know much about it, but what I do know is it seems like this project does not represent common sense. We have 313 apartments on the Twinbrooks Golf Course, and of that, it's like, I believe there's like 43 affordable housing apartments. Now, one of the things that I don't understand is they said at several meetings that people will be able to walk to work. Now, a previous speaker spoke about all the people and the percentage of off-Cape employees that work that represent an income bracket of probably 30% AMI. And this is just a drop in the bucket. I don't think people are going to walk to work from this place, and if you consider there's 500 parking spaces allotted in this proposal, it just doesn't make common sense. You have several businesses around there, the West End Restaurant, you have the Cape Way Towing, you have a liquor store in Brockland Trust, and at several meetings, there was a comment about, why are you doing this? Why are you pushing us through? And I just don't understand, as a citizen of Barnstable, that the town would allow such a development to go through. I understand we need, there's a drastic need for public housing, but the big problem, and it's not just related to Cape Cod, it's all over the place, there is no public housing. The housing that's built is not affordable to the people that have a 30% AMI or less. And they're the primary workforce that we have in our businesses on the Cape and on the islands. And the same thing is true for Nantucket. They have a lot of projects built where they say so-called affordability. I don't believe that. And I just wanted you to reach out to you, to hear my concerns about this project, and make sure that it doesn't go through the way it's stated, and that a smaller project would be developed that makes more common sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room here that would like to speak? Okay, not seeing any. Director Point, do we have anybody here?
Thank you, President Levitt. Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Brett Goldberg. Mr. Goldberg, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Brett Goldberg, and I own a home on Long Pond in Marston's Mills. I agree with what my neighbor Amy Messero said about half an hour ago. We have been waiting a long been waiting a long time for a cyanobacteria solution for Long Pond, and I support the proposal of a pilot floating wetlands treatment project on Long Pond. I understand that proposal will be on the town council's agenda next month, and I urge you to approve funding for that floating wetlands project when it comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Doug Faulkner. Mr. Faulkner, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Doug Farquhar. I'm speaking on behalf of Agenda Item 79, which is a request to budget $125,000 in support of the dam and fish ladder that need to be built on Lake Elizabeth in Craigville Village. Craigville Village is host to two ponds, the Red Lily Pond and Lake Elizabeth, that together form a great lake. We do not have the water problems that have been discussed by other people earlier today. The water quality is fairly good, but the wooden dam that forms Lake Elizabeth and its sister, Red Lily Pond, broke, rewrote it about in 2008, and we are desperately in need of replacing that dam to restore the water level and to provide the herring run that used to exist there up until 2008. There were hundreds of herons that used to spawn in the lake. They've been unable to reach it because of the erosion of the dam. The new dam and fish ladder would be a project that we would partner with the town on. The community only has about 100 homes in it, but we have been able so far to fund the planning and permitting costs. But we will not be able to take this through to completion or to bidding without support from the town budget. There will be tremendous benefits to the community, but not only to our community. We have literally hundreds of people who, from neighboring communities, who walk through our village and admire the pond, and who would appreciate the increase in wildlife that will come with the heron when the dam and fish ladder is built. I will be sitting in the Zoom room when you all discuss this later in your meeting, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at that point. Thank you very much for listening to me. Mr. Levesque, you'll remember, this is something we talked about when you visited Craigville over the summer, and I hope it's something that will carry the day later in your meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Graham Siliman. Mr. Siliman, you have three minutes. You may unmute.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about the transfer of the Cotuit Elementary School property from the town to the Cotuit Fire District. This is new business that will be before the council tonight, or at this point, maybe tomorrow morning. So, just in general, the transfer has many merits. It has been worked on diligently by town and fire district employees and volunteers. However, there is a significant flaw in the proposal that the council is voting on tonight, and it speaks to an area that the council has responsibility, which is fiscal impact. The Cotuit Elementary School building is a town building, and its demolition should be handled by the town. This is how the demolition of the Osterville Bay School was handled, and this is the current plan for the Marston's Mills Elementary School. It actually just is not fair that this project is something that should be shouldered just by one village. This is a town building. One of your explicit considerations in voting is fiscal impact, and in this case, we have an issue of fiscal impact fairness. And at this point, only you on the town council can take the issue into consideration. So, overall, although the project is a good idea, I ask the council to set this vote aside and ask the scope to be amended, send it back to town employees so that the disposition of this surplus town building is handled fairly, like similar buildings in other villages have been and are currently scheduled to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Catherine McMurray. Ms. McMurray, you have three minutes. You may unmute.
Thank you. My name is Catherine McMurray. I am a resident of Cotuit. I am also speaking to the property at 140 Old Oyster Road. First and foremost, I want to thank the people who put the time and energy into seeking the conservation restriction associated with this property. I have young children who'll be here for a very long time, and so they will be thanking you as well. So, thank you. I would actually like to comment in support of the property transfer at 140 Old Oyster Road in Cotuit. I voted to approve this transfer. I voted with the knowledge that this would be a potential cost as a resident of Cotuit. I voted with the knowledge that other projects have been funded by the town of Barnstable. I still voted yes on the project, on the transfer, excuse me. Most people at that meeting voted for the transfer as well, and I believe that their vote deserves to be honored this evening. I happen to be an abboture to the property, and I have watched, over time, quite literally from my backyard, the deterioration of the property at 140 Old Oyster. It is becoming abandoned. It's becoming open to vandalism and loitering, and I don't think that we need to halt this process any longer. I think that we need to support the transfer and move on to the next phase so that this doesn't continue to happen in this space. So, I support honoring the vote. I support the conservation restriction, and I support us moving on to the next phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bill McKinney. Mr. McKinney, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Bill McKinney. I'm a year-round resident of Craigville, an ordained minister in the United Church of Christ, and president of the Christian Camp Meeting Association. The Christian Camp Meeting Association celebrated its 150th anniversary last year, and it's one of the hidden gems of the town of Barnstable. We own all the public lands in Craigville, including the Craigville Retreat Center, which serves something around 8,000 people a year, mostly young people from churches around-- churches and institutions of higher education across the state. As to that, I want to reiterate what Doug Farquhar said earlier about the amount of community support there is in this village for the lakes project. We've been trying to save those ponds since the late 1970s, and we've raised literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in trying various techniques, including voluntary compliance with non-use of fertilizers and other elements that have contributed to the death of the ponds, to the dying of the ponds. It happens that during herring count months, I go down every day around 12:30, spend 10 minutes looking for herring that I know are not going to be there, but to help document the fact that, while we know they were there at one point, we know that they now can't get into the pond through the herring run. So this project is really the key to bringing back the herring and all the wildlife that will come along with it, and has very strong support from Craigville Village. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Steve Almeida. Mr. Almeida, you have three minutes. You may unmute.
Thank you. I'm calling in tonight to address Items 132 and 133 in old business. That is calling for the abandonment of Mother's Park Road, and Item 133 calls for that land to be taken by eminent domain as part of a larger sewer install program that's going on, obviously. I'm calling in opposition to both. First, I regularly use Mother's Park Road, as is my family, and any time I'm on the road, I see other people using it as well. So what the vote calls on members of the town council to do is to essentially say that this road is abandoned. I know that's, in fact, not true. The sort of larger issue is, the town is then going to say, it's abandoned, so we're going to take it by eminent domain, and basically involuntarily extinguish the rights of the owners who own parcels of that land. And I think that's always concerning when there's going to be an involuntary taking by the town, particularly once based on essentially the lie that Mother's Park Road is, in fact, abandoned, when it's not. So I would urge members of the town council to vote in opposition to Items 132 and 133. One of the points made in favor is that the people who abut it are in favor of it, and I certainly can see why. Essentially, the plan calls for the road to be taken over, and it will be part of the park. So, of course, these homeowners would want, understandably, as would I, to be abutting a park increases their property value. But again, I don't think you individual members should be willing to lie and say that the park is, in fact, abandoned when it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Almeida.
That is the end of public comment on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you, Director Poynihan. And now is the time for council response to public comment. So look to my left. Any council response to public comment? Anybody to my right? Council Leckie, please.
This may be just the tiniest bit long. I understand we have a long agenda tonight, but we have a lot of people here, and everyone has spoken beautifully. I so appreciate. Everyone's taking their time to come out here. I'd like to speak to everyone, but I'm going to group three people together to start, because you all commented on something similar. And we have later in the town manager's report some things that relate to what you said, and I want to try to pull it all together. So the people I want to group together are Suzanne Conley, Cliff Carroll, and Chuck Tuttle. You all spoke about the Douses Beach. Well, Chuck, you were more talking about the, I guess it's the Park City Wind and the substation up where the hotel is. But you're all speaking to something similar. And I sense your frustration that you're attempting to comment at the Cape Cod Commission, and you spoke that Elizabeth Jenkins and Charlie McLaughlin spoke beautifully, and you'd like to continue speaking through those individuals. I support that. But when you're speaking at that venue, you're speaking at the last point you can speak. Why wouldn't we get ahead of the projects and interject ourself at a point further in the process so we're not at the end of the food chain, if you will? The town of Barnstable puts itself in a position where they have no opportunity to negotiate. You're negotiating at the margins. You leave these host agreements to Mr. Els, and I've spoken before public, Mr. Els is amazing. He's so talented. He has a great reputation in the state. But you're putting him at a disadvantage. And when Suzanne spoke, she talked about the 83C bidding, and there's a round four of bidding coming out. And I don't know how many of you are aware. I went and read, the state put out a call for stakeholders to comment on the round four bids. New Bedford commented on it, as did 20 to 30 other folks, cable manufacturers, Avengrid commented, all sorts of folks commented. I talked to Gordon earlier. He's part of a group that had a joint comment on that. So one of my questions is, and maybe Attorney Nobur or Mark Els, how did we miss that opportunity to comment on the round four bids? Because that would have given us an opportunity, as New Bedford did, to advocate for our particular issues and speak for our citizens, and get ahead of it, and not put ourselves at a horrible disadvantage where we are right now. So I don't know if there's an answer to that, if we intentionally missed the boat, or if we just missed the boat. But what we can do, I think, is we have an excellent opportunity, because the bids haven't gone out yet for round four. And I will say, oh, I think it was Mr. Tuttle, you had asked about Avengrid, you know, about what's going on. I will tell you that State Senator Rodriguez submitted two letters on this advertisement from the state to comment on the next round, and in that, he said Avengrid should not be awarded in round four. So you do have a state senator looking out for you. But what we could do, and I know we did it with Holtech, is the town council wrote a letter for that, and that's being discussed in the town manager's report. We have a fantastic opportunity here, because we have everybody's comments that commented on the round four bids. And I would ask Suzanne, and I know she's met with me, I think she's met with a number of you, or she's made appointments, her people, I don't know if that's true or not. I think she did meet with you. She has incredible expertise. She has an individual, Adam, who is so intelligent on electrical matters. And what I want to propose, and I hope we do this, but we have to do it somewhat quickly before those bids come out, is that we ask Suzanne and her group to draft a letter that expresses some of the concerns, as New Bedford did, that are particular to Cape Cod, and we send those to Secretary Tepper, Rebecca Tepper, Energy and Environmental Affairs Secretary, just as we're proposing to do with the Holchek release of the radioactive water. I think the two are very related. And we courtesy the governor. These bids, this whole process was put out, I think Chuck Tuttle mentioned it beautifully. This is brand new. We're the first ones out of the gates. There's a learning curve. And with any kind of a huge project like this, there's going to be course corrections. This was put out under the Baker administration. We have a new administration. Why don't we take advantage of that? And we have an incredible emissary. We have Mark Els that could take this letter forward, and let's get ahead of this. So we're not in the backseat saying, oh, you know, we can mark, you know, we're putting ourselves in a terrible position, and we shouldn't be doing that. So I would ask for support on this, to ask Suzanne if she'd be amenable to this, to draft us a letter, as the Association to Preserve Cape Cod has helped us with the Holchek letters, and we send this to Secretary Tepper, and we address some of this. Because it just doesn't make sense for us to sit here and do nothing. And again, I don't know if Mark Els or Attorney Nobur could say, did we just miss the boat, or did we intentionally not comment on these round fours? Because obviously, New Bedford knew about it, and they commented. So I'd like to have some, maybe some discussion or other comments from my fellow councilors, or Mark Els, if we could have Suzanne help the town. I think she's able. I don't know if she's willing, but she certainly is able. And we could address this with Secretary Tepper.
So you asking, Council Leckie, are you asking Mark Els to speak at the podium right now?
I'm asking him to see if we intentionally missed the deadline for getting our comments to the state on the round four bids.
Assistant Town Manager Andy Kleiberg, please.
He just went out the door.
Any other feedback before I bring him up to the podium?
Any other comments? Oh, here he is.
Town Manager Mark Els.
Did you hear my comment?
I did.
Yeah. Were you aware of those comments that was a chance for stakeholders to comment on the round four bids? I'm just wondering if we failed to comment intentionally, or we just weren't quite aware that we were a stakeholder that had the opportunity to do so.
There was no intentional avoidance of comment on the bid. One of the primary reasons for pausing the host-community agreement relevant to the issue around the power purchase agreements was our concern that we may give a competitive advantage to somebody who was not fulfilling their obligation under their power purchase agreement. So we're very much aware of it. I think what I'd like to do, though, is sit down and look at the types of comments relevant to a public bid for purchasing power versus what I've heard tonight, which are very appropriate. Actually, if you go to our comments on the MEPA ENF, much of what was said is in the town of Barnstable's comments. was said is in the town of Barnstable's comments to the state. But I think that I want to look and see what the PPA will contain, rather, the request for proposal for bidders to submit for a power purchase agreement, because I don't think it asks these environmental questions. I think it's relevant to procuring an agreement relevant to the purchase of power. So...
Did you look at the comments that were submitted?
I, no, I haven't gone through them. No. No.
Okay. I just feel like we have an opportunity here.
Okay. Well, I'm not, I'm not balking at the opportunity.
If you're open to writing to Secretary Tepper to bring up some of this opportunity that, you know, perhaps things could be done differently. Perhaps a course correction might help us.
I'm more than happy to review it and comment appropriately.
Yeah. I don't know if you'd be willing to work with Suzanne's group.
Always.
Okay.
Always.
But, you know, the time is running short. The round four bids are going to be put out in about a month, I think.
Yeah. They had initially said spring to early summer with a decision by late fall till the end of the year.
But in that, the request for proposal, they talked about a broad range of subjects having to do, again, with, you know, you're familiar with the planned approach and intermediary approach. And they really asked some very thoughtful questions.
Which I, which I have reached out to our legislature and our administration, relevant to planned versus unplanned cable routing.
Exactly.
And I'm awaiting an opportunity to have further discussion.
Would a letter from the town council to Secretary Tepper help you to achieve your goal?
Always. I mean, certainly the council's support, but I think I have that, quite honestly. In the fact that I reach out directly, or I communicate with, you know, the lieutenant governor, typically not the governor on issues, did frequently with prior, beginning to with the current. So I absolutely willing to sit down. I know Mr. Carroll was here as well, and any and all that are here. That's, I represent town of Barnstable, try to advise as best as we can as this progresses. I think it's important to note, though, that the proponent, you were saying, getting ahead of this, but they don't necessarily wait or ask us. And so I think it's really important that it's not an excuse, it's a recognition of the process. And so I think it's important to keep that in mind, but also to be, you know, diligent in making comment where appropriate. So...
But this is, again, for the new round of bids.
Understood. Understood. They're trying to...
It'll be all new players in the game here.
There will be new bidders in the game. And it's still, from my understanding, it hasn't been determined yet whether the existing group who, I don't know if the word default is correct, I'm sure my legal department will correct me, but the existing group who has not fulfilled their obligation is an eligible bidder.
Well, that's what Senator Rodriguez, he sent in his comment on that.
But that's a different, understood. But see, the preparation of an RFP is different than that comment. That comment is a post-evaluation based on who bids.
And he sent two letters in. One was that, and one was another on the, these were comments on the preparation of the new RFP. And that's where I was saying that it might have been something that would have been good for us to engage in.
More than happy to pull it back up and review it with the council. And if you believe a letter's appropriate, President Leveque, I'd be more than happy to help you craft it.
Yeah, I would love, I would love you to look at the comments, Mark, and...
Yeah, I haven't gone back. We originally, I knew the RFP was out, or being prepared, and that it was planned to come back out. And I've been watching carefully what occurs relevant to that. Because if we remember, as we entered into this host agreement process, the reason that we did it was because the federal government had given Avangrid the grant for these. The, there was a power purchase agreement with, through Massachusetts to the utilities for this, and they commenced permitting, both federal and state. They didn't ask us. They came to us and told us, and they told us where they were proposing to land. So we, and I think your comment was greatly appreciated, that with each passing day that they progress through, whether we agree with the project or not, when, as they progress through permitting, we have less ability to be able to negotiate what Barnstable wants. That has been crystal clear. And there's been recent decisions where they've been awarded when the public hasn't supported the project, not in this state. But, so those are all things to watch as this progresses.
Right. No, it's just, I was very taken by New Bedford. I mean, they talked about their fishing. I mean, every, every town has their unique...
Can we, can we just move on to the next, that'd be great. We have a long agenda in front of us.
But that's why I'm here. I'm always here to work with our public and listen, and then advise council.
Excellent.
That's my job.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
And I wanted to make one more comment.
Sure, please.
On, we had so many individuals, I won't name you by name, who spoke about the health of the ponds. And I loved what one gentleman said, that this is an investment, just like any other infrastructure. And I said at the last meeting that I thought the data collected by the local comprehensive plan survey should be merged with our financial analysis so that we're meeting, really, the needs of our citizens. And on that local comprehensive survey, water of all forms was the number one thing that our citizens cared about. So you've really borne that out tonight with your comments about the water. And I absolutely support, it is our, like, an infrastructure that needs to be supported very carefully.
Thank you, President Leveque. I just have, just a couple overall quick, quick comments. I'm just continually impressed with the knowledge and experience of the people that came tonight. It feels like town meeting. I know in Yarmouth, they had about 400 people two nights ago. That's sort of what this feels like. And thank you all for coming, and thank you for being involved, and thank you for speaking. And I'm just, just also impressed with how active you are as residents. People have, you know, have raised money, you've done research, you've been out there in the ponds in the middle of the night, you've educated each other. And I just want to thank everybody and keep it, keep it, keep it up. We'd love to hear from you anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Star. Anybody else on this side? Counsel Schnapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to echo the comments of my fellow counselors, Letky and Starr, in being so impressed with the turnout this evening and the passion which you bring to these issues that make the quality of life in our town so important. And I thank you for your patience, because sometimes these processes take a long time. And we have very dedicated staff who do the work and do the science and do, you know, there's a lot of procurement issues. And so sometimes it takes a little bit longer than anybody would appreciate in getting things done. So again, I just want to thank all of you for your persistence, for, you know, sharing your passions with us. And just to kind of relate, that sometimes things take a long time because we do value the public comment. And so some decisions take a lot longer to reach. So again, continue to come up, come in, show up, you know, communicate with us however you do. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Schnapp. Anybody else on the side? Anybody else? Okay. Again, just want to say thank you to everybody who participated today. I was very impressed with, obviously, a few people made, rehearsed their public comment, because I was looking over here at the clock, and you were like, right at three minutes. So, and that's, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, we should have a door prize. But it's, but, but, and that's not a slight to anybody who went over three minutes. I'm just saying...
Take the microphone.
Yeah. No, we wouldn't do that. But the, again, I just appreciate everybody's input, your willingness to be part of the process. We hear you, and we take what you say seriously. Is it Mr. Barnes, coming all the way from Nantucket? And good luck with what you're trying to do over there. So I appreciate you. And if, if anyway, what I'm doing up here is somehow an example for you, I'm sorry. But doing the best I can, but at the same time, you know, I appreciate the kind words. We always get that. So I appreciate that, especially around budget season. But at the same time, the, just understanding as well, all the needs, water quality, quality of life, safety, housing, affordable housing, all those things that get brought up, these are something that everybody on this dais lives and breathes every day and tries to make the right decisions. And as much as possible, and we, again, we appreciate your patience, and we appreciate the, we do try to listen. And, and again, I just appreciate, especially those who treat us professionally. I really appreciate that. So, because it's not an easy job, and we're not engineers, and we're not architects, but we are passionate about the place we live, like you are. And again, you know, I would be very much in favor of any work that's being done in our ponds and our estuaries, all those types of things to clean that up. I would support that. And so I just want to say thank you for being here and participating in tonight's. And that is the end of public comment. Thank you. So everybody's welcome to stay, of course, if you'd like to.
You've got six more hours.
But if you would like to, I'm just going to give a couple of seconds. I'm not going to take a recess, but I'll give you an opportunity to maybe have dinner. Actually, why don't we do a two-minute recess while we transfer the room? So two-minute recess, please. Two-minute recess. I'd like to welcome everybody back to the April 27, 2023 town council meeting. The meeting room got thinned out a little bit. But thank you for those who are still here, and we will try to move through the process as quickly as possible. It is now time for number, item number six on our town... It is now time for number, item number six in our Town Manager Communications, and that is our Town Manager's Report. And the Town Manager's Report has actually been pre-recorded and is available to Town Council and the public. The report will be prepared in written form and posted on the Town Manager's website as in the past. The Town Manager and staff will be available to answer any questions regarding the report as presented. The Town Manager's Communication for the period of April 7th to April 27, 2023 included an update on item number one, the Budget Action Calendar. Number two, announcement regarding Cape Cod Chamber Big Blue Conference. Number three, announcement of upcoming Great Streets Downtown Hyannis Meeting. Number four, continued efforts regarding prohibiting discharge of radioactive wastewater from the Plymouth Nuclear Power Plant. Number five, notice for action by town and public hearing regarding lands at Cape Cod Community College. Number six, beach raking announcement for summer 2023. Number seven, continued town discussions with Mass DEP regarding proposed changes to Title V. Number eight, update regarding a training seminar conducted by the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission hosted by the Town of Barnstable for the Cape and Islands towns. And number nine, presentation from Kelly Colapi, Communications Manager for the Public Works Department, providing an update on Water Resource Management Planning, including the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. So those are the items discussed in our Town Manager Report, and at this time, I would entertain any questions from the Town Council in regard to that report. Looking to my right this time, anyone? To my left, anybody? Council Cusack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question for Town Manager Ls in regards to, let's see, number six. The beach raking, I understand that the complaint came from somewhere, goes to the state, comes down to us. Looks like we'll, in the future, need some sort of a raking management plan. I just didn't know, let's say we got to some nuisance conditions on, I think it's five beaches in the town, whether or not there would be relief so that raking could happen in a way to, you know, smell can be an issue on the beaches with rotting effectively debris, so I didn't know if there would be any sort of relief that we could get in the future to get the job done of raking, but in a way that was not intrusive to the species that are trying to be protected. Thank you.
My understanding is that we can have the discussion requesting relief. We are working with them, and we are heading toward management plans for the beach, for beach raking. But I can't answer your question, will they grant relief? It'll most likely depend on the severity of the health or safety concern. Okay? So I guess depending on the situation, if we had a huge storm, I know our staff would be documenting and probably having that discussion in the more routine events that we see occur, that'll be a different discussion. But if it reaches that level, yes, we will have those discussions. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cusack, Town Manager Ls. Anybody questions for Town Manager Ls? That was a brief Town Manager Communications, but again, anybody who would like to watch that on Channel, Website, Channel 18, please, it'll play previous, prior to this meeting, so.
Could I make a note, sir?
You sure can, sir.
Thank you. Mark Millen also did a budget summary for us, so hopefully you had the opportunity to watch, but for our viewing public, in addition to the Town Manager Communication this week, there's also been a capital budget summary done by Mark Millen, Director of Finance. So thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Yeah, wasn't on my list, but thank you. And that really outlines how we come across, how we come to the CIP-approved Town Manager Recommendations for our CIP budget, which we're going to go over tonight. So if you would like to, you know, find out how that comes about, that is definitely a good presentation to watch, and Mark Millen, he does it every year for us, and it's definitely an education on how we come about to prioritize certain projects in our town with our, with the, you know, again, not unlimited funds that, but limited funds that we have. Thank you. So that would be the end of the Town Manager Communications, and now would be time, Madam Vice Chair, to act on the minutes, please.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of Town Council Meeting from April 6, 2023, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. If you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous. And now it is time for Council Communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Looking to my left, Councilor Mendez, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Just like to let everybody know that the John Reed Memorial is Saturday at 3:30 at the Performing Arts Center at Barnstable High School. Doors open at 3 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other announcements? Councilor Starr, please.
I don't really have an announcement. I have a comment about, I don't know, four or five days ago, I was here for the graduation of the Citizens Academy, the latest cohort that went through. Mr. Ls was here. It was about 24 people who met with most of the town department heads, and I was just impressed with the, with the, how impressed they were with, with the staff that we have, how hard they worked. They were just, they were just, I wish we could bottle it. So there are a lot of department heads here tonight. You should be proud of your staff, and they were, it made an impression on at least 24 people in town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Schnepp, please.
Thank you, Ms. President. I'd like to make an early announcement of the next Mill Billy Breakfast, which will be held at Liberty Hall in Marson's Mills on Sunday, May 7th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. There is a huge portion of food, and I know that at least one of the councilors and maybe two will be helping serve. There are pancakes, eggs, sausage, bacon, coffee, OJ. Again, $10, pretty, pretty good deal, and $8 for kids. And you don't have to live in Marson's Mills to attend, so I want to encourage you to put on your calendars. That's May 7th from 8:00 to 10:00 at Liberty Hall.
Thank you, Councilor Schnepp. Anybody else? Oh, Councilor Shaughnessy, please.
I just wanted to add on to what Councilor Starr said. I went through the citizens' leadership class for the Town of Barnstable. It's a great class, but more importantly than the students who graduated so shortly after their graduation, I want to say three or four of them applied to be on Barnstable Board's Committee and Commission, which I think is even more impressive and great job. Susan Sheehan and Deb Brunel.
Thank you, Councilor Shaughnessy. I happened to be at the graduation as well, and it is, it was an excited group, and it was very, to watch the Appointments Committee meeting last night and to see so many enthusiastically try to find a way to serve this town and in any way, shape, or form, and some of them just threw their talents at the, at the mercy of the Appointments Committee and say, where do you think we would fit in? You know, so it was very satisfying to see something like that. So again, yeah, kudos to Susan and Deb for putting that together, and that they couldn't get enough professional, I mean, complimentary compliments to our staff and professionals that work for the Town of Barnstable. So you should be proud of yourself. Okay. Any other? Yes, sir. Council Cusack, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just also want to commend Chief Sonnabend and Superintendent Ahern and the various fire chiefs. I attended the active shooter sort of preparation drill that was conducted at the high school two Fridays ago, and I just, I left that with a lot of confidence about the professionalism and focus and how an event as horrible as it might be would be well-conducted by the professionals that we have on our team here in Barnstable.
Thank you, Council Cusack. Okay. Not seeing other announcements, am I sure? Okay, I would close that part of our meeting, and now we would get into the orders of the day, and we are going to hop around a little bit just to make sure that we get through a certain number of items that have been continued. And so councilors, just to give you a heads up, we're going to be going to item number 132, 133, and we're going to piggyback on that, an item of new business, 2023-179. So with that, I'm actually going to invite Attorney McGlaughlin to come up. Do you want to give a rationale after we do the first item? Read that into the record, sir?
I think if we could open all three items with, with a motion, and then I'll read a consolidated rationale for all three, and then you can take separate votes on the, on the three.
Okay. That is what we'll do, sir. So Madam Vice President, if you could please, read into the record 2023-132, 2023-133, and item number 2023-179.
Sure. So first of all, item 2023-132, order to discontinue and abandon Mothers Park Road, Centerville, Mass. This is a public hearing, roll call two-thirds. Item 2023-133, appropriation order in the amount of $22,700 for the purpose of acquiring the fee in Mothers Park Road by eminent domain for sewer and water and general municipal purposes. This is a public hearing as well, with a roll call of two-thirds of the full council. And item number 2023-179, order to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth to enact special legislation approving the change of use of 5,803 square feet within Mothers Park, Centerville, may be acted upon, again, with a two-thirds vote of the full council, as written.
Second.
First and a second. Attorney McGlaughlin, please. Thank you.
Thank you, President Levesque. I'm told I'm going to turn into a pumpkin if I spend more than two minutes on this, so I'm going to keep moving very quickly on it and take any questions that you may have. These matters, of course, have been, I think, front and center and in various iterations discussed for some time, so happy to take questions. But the first item, 132, is an order to discontinue and abandon Mothers Park Road, and in fact, we had one matter that preceded this, Mothers Park Road had been a county road for probably the better part of 100 years, and knowing that we were going to need access to it, we petitioned the county successfully, and the county voted unanimously to abandon the road as a county road, and then by operation of law, given the petition that we had filed, title to the road reverted to the Town of Barnstable, which then sets the position that we find ourselves in with regard to 132. The broader scheme here is to abandon Mothers Park Road as a roadway, take the layout that is involved by eminent domain, because when you abandon the roadway, those who abut that roadway regain their title or their predecessor's title to, in this case, the middle of the road. And we need to get access to that roadway for a number of purposes, but primarily for the purpose of installing an underground pump station within the roadway layout. As you recall, with the discussions about the home on Main Street and so forth, there was an overwhelming consensus that had changed significantly from a number of years previously to support, public support for putting the necessary sewer pump station, a really vital part of the sewer outlet plan in Mothers Park Road rather than putting it on the private, formerly private home lot on, on Main Street. So we're moving forward with that. The two steps are abandon the road, and then the next proposal under 133 is, and we have had the property appraised, the interest, if you will, in abandoned roadways for the four of us who are involved, and that appraised out at 22-7. So we're asking for an appropriation order in that amount, and at that point, we would then ask for, in a combined vote, to take by eminent domain for sewer and water purposes. That will give us title to the road and will allow us to install in the roadway the underground pump station. And I know that DPW is here if there should be any technical questions, but what's critical here is that this is one of the prime locations for installing at a reasonable grade without massive expenses elsewhere to install it there, and we would prefer not to have, when we get into this, we, DPW had recognized the issue of having, if you do cut off Mothers Park Road, then the vehicles traveling down north Main to the intersection of Finney's would have an oblique, really tough angle to make on a right-hand turn to go back north on, on Finney's, and particularly when we see some, for example, the landscape trucks with trailers and tail, and tailing, there's simply no way that a vehicle looking to turn north on Finney's could avoid swinging into the oncoming lane, the southbound lane or southeastbound lane of, of Finney's, and risking a head-on collision. Surprisingly, I think most everyone has availed themselves of Mothers Park Road to avoid that conundrum, but certainly there are enough folks, particularly who aren't especially familiar with it, who are making that turn and getting into harm's way every day, and surprisingly, there are fewer accidents reported in that area than one might expect, but there's that potential that a catastrophic accident could happen in that area. So that brings us to the next element of this project, and that is that we have an opportunity to ask for a reconfiguration of Mothers Park, which is a public trust that was left to us by Howard Marston in, in the early 1900s, and it was left to honor his mother, and when, in his will, he then bequeathed it to the town to be held again in perpetuity as a park. Because that angle of intersection is so poor, we recognize through DPW's examination that this would be an ideal time to go in, take some footage from the park, make that turn angle a true 90-degree right-hand, left-hand turn, and with the site angles greatly improved, dramatically improve the safety of that, of that area. Also, with the opportunity to improve pedestrian safety by some, creating some sidewalks in that area. And then finally, again, in terms of what's going to happen to Mothers Park net at the end of this process, we're going to abandon approximately 5,400, I have the numbers here, about 5,308, I think is the number, square feet of the park to accommodate the changes at the end of the park, at the, at that new intersection. We will utilize a portion of Mothers Park for the underground pump station. The remainder of Mothers Park Road is going to be about 9,288 square feet, which will be added back to the park, so that at the end of the day, the park will have grown by above 3,400 and change in square feet. So you're going to end up with a better park, with some better parking in, in the layout of Mothers Park Road, including some better handicapped, accessible considerations there. And at the end of the day, you have a much safer intersection, and we'll have an outstanding subterranean pump station. That's what these three votes in combination require and, and will accomplish. I'll simply note on 179, we've been through this, because this is public park land, it's so-called Article 97 lands, which means under the state constitution that we have to petition the legislature for approval of this with the blessing of the Secretary of EOEEA and their review and approval. The AG's office will get, also get involved because this is an alteration of a, of a bequest to the town, so there'll be a, we'll be filing, under the direction of the Town Manager, we'll be filing with the Supreme Judicial Court to approve that change, and we trust at the end of the day that the improvements to the park and the increase in size of the park will be looked on favorably by those who have to review it, including the legislature. When all of that is done, we'll be ready to go with, with these improvements. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney McGlaughlin. This is a public hearing. I'm just going to go item by item, so.
Mr. President, I did neglect, I gave to Assistant Clerk Murphy a required report from the planning board, this abandonment of the roadway requires planning from the planning board. This abandonment of the roadway requires planning board approval. In fact, on Thursday, February 22 of this year, we appeared before the planning board, and the board recommended unanimously, in terms of those present and voting, that they supported the abandonment of the road. So, that is in the record and with Janet Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McLaughlin. Appreciate that. So, just going item by item, for item number 2023-132, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the room that would like to comment on the item, which is order to discontinue and abandon Mothers Park Road, Centerville? Okay, not seeing any. Is anybody looking to participate remotely? Director Polian?
There was no public comment on Zoom for this item.
Okay, thank you. And so with that, I would close the public hearing on that. Moving on to item number one, I'm sorry, 2023-133, that's also a public hearing. Would anybody like to comment in regards to this item, which says appropriation order in the amount of $22,700 for the purchase of acquiring the fee in Mothers Park Road by eminent domain for sewer and water and general municipal purposes? Okay, not seeing any. Is anybody to participate via remote?
There is no one on Zoom for this item.
Thank you very much. And fast forwarding, let me get my page number here. Okay, we go to 2023-179. That is may be acted upon, therefore there was no public hearing on that. So, with that, is there any council discussion on any three of these items? Counsel Atzlis, please.
Yes, I'll aim to be brief. I just want to comment, I know some will say it's their job, but I just want to comment to DPW, our attorney's office. I think, as I learned through this process, they learned a lot as this process went on. I think they stumbled upon obstacles they weren't expecting or aware of, and I believe they probably learned a lot, too. But through their patience and perseverance and expertise, we got, we're getting to this point. I also just want to speak to the, I think, one person I've heard from in opposition of this, that this was a necessary change of plan due to public concern and feedback about 310 Main Street. That was originally, that was proposed to be the location of the pump station. And as things turned out, Mothers Park was the next choice, and one that's turning out to be a better choice, because it's going to be a far greater benefit to the community. So, I think it goes without saying, based on my comments, I will be supporting this. Thank you. Actually, all three items. Thank you.
Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Just for some clarification and for my edification, the language going to the General Court refers to the town council of the city known as the town of Barnstable. So, why is it couched that way?
We had an Article 97, had a couple of Article 97 petitions before the legislature recently, particularly with respect to Vineyard Wind. And in consultation with the Secretary's Office of EOEEA and with General Counsel for the Legislature, they asked, since we are, in fact, a city, form of government, that we make clear in the record for the benefit of the legislature exactly what was going on, particularly as it relates to quantum of vote and examining that in context. A city has obligations and opportunities that towns don't necessarily become involved in. So, it was important to spell that out for the legislature. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Okay, not seeing any. The first item, thank you, Attorney McLaughlin, again, for your work on this and presentation. Appreciate it. So, if not seeing any more council discussion, I would move to a vote for item number 2023-132. Roll call, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Counselors, Atzlis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Cuzack?
Yes.
Rap Garsetti?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Atzlis?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. And just a point of reference, Attorney McLaughlin, for the next item, I know it says may be acted upon. Is that just a raise of hands, and no need for a roll call majority on that?
We could do it in that fashion, particularly if you have, if you don't get it unanimous, I'd like to see you take a head count, but.
Yeah, let's do it as a roll call, since this is two-thirds. Yeah, I would agree.
My boss says do it as a roll call, so do it as a roll call.
Let's do it. Let's do it. Thank you for that. Assistant, it always doesn't hurt to ask. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, please, for the roll call vote.
Counselors, Cullum?
Yes.
Cuzack?
Yes.
Rap Garsetti?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Atzlis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. And just for a point of information for the folks from Indian Ponds, just so you know, we're going to move through these items. Once we get to the CIP, I'm taking your item and moving it to the top of the list, okay? So, just bear with me until we get through these items here. And once we get to the CIP projects, we'll move you up to the top, okay? So, don't think you're going to have to be super, super late. Just a little bit more time, please. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Attorney McLaughlin. Appreciate that. And moving on, we're actually going to bump back up to item number 2023-126. Counsel Schnep, if you can help me with that item, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Page 62.
This is an item of new business. It's the first reading. A referral to the second reading on May 4, 2023. This is item number 2023-126, appointments to a board committee commission. Resolve that the town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee commission. Mid-Cape Cultural Council, Barbara Hershey, as a regular member, to a term expiring 6/2025. Shellfish Committee, Paul Hendricks Jr., as a professional fisheries trained member, to a term expiring 6/2024. And Youth Commission, Sophia Matchnick, as a student member, to a term expiring 6/2024. And Daniel Gomes, as a student member, to a term expiring 6/2024. Second.
First and a second, again referring this to a second reading on May 4, 2023. If you can signify your approval, counsel, by raising your hand and saying aye. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Schnep. Okay, moving on. Next item of business would be item number 2023-139. And if I could, Counsel Shaughnessy, please, if you could read that into the record.
Page 68.
This is old business, may be acted upon by majority vote. This is item number 2023-139, order approving an amendment to the 1992, 1995, and 1997 agreements between the town and the Woods Hole Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket Steamship Authority, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and we have Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn for the rationale, please.
Good evening, town councilors. Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. The rationale for item 2023-139, as presented at the town council meeting on 16 March, addressed two parts, the length of the authority vessels and the consolidation of multiple agreements. The first part is very straightforward. The Steamship Authority request approval to extend the maximum length of authority vessels to 245 feet. The current agreement limit is 235 feet. The requested change was presented to and unanimously recommended by the town's Waterways Committee. The second part pertaining to the consolidation of multiple agreements was discussed at length with many suggestions offered to the Steamship Authority for consideration. While there were no specific objections to consolidating the decades-old agreements, it was clear the town council wanted more specificity in what would be negotiated in the new agreement. The matter was then continued to give the Steamship Authority time to consider. The Steamship Authority has now had time to consider everything that was discussed in March and is with us tonight to again request the 10-foot modification to the length of vessel requirement and agree to specific items to be negotiated in a new agreement. I believe that Madam Vice President has a proposed amendment ready that captures these items.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to offer an amendment that would keep the existing language of item 2023-139, but would add a requirement that the Steamship Authority agree to negotiate in good faith with the town to try to reach agreement on the relinquishment by the Steamship Authority of its right of first refusal for 200 Main Street and the granting of an easement by the Steamship Authority to allow and accommodate trailer-truck access to vessels at the Pleasant Street Town Dock in Hyannis. My amendment would also require periodic review of the superseding agreement between the town and the Steamship Authority. I move to amend, and this is obviously on the screen, I move to amend item 2023-139 as written, by striking the language in that item in its entirety and by substituting the following in its place with the new language that's in bold. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
That the town council does hereby authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute an amendment to the July 16, 1992 agreement, the February 27, 1995 memorandum of understanding relative to the agreement dated as of July 16, 1992, and the November 6, 1997 amendment to the agreement stated July 16, 1992 and February 27, 1995, between the Woods Hole Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket Steamship Authority and the town of Barnstable, to increase the permitted maximum overall length of any of the SSA's vessels to 245 feet, provided that the execution of such amendment shall be contingent on said amendment expressly including language in which the town and the SSA agree to. Number one, work collaboratively to consolidate the agreements and the amendment authorized herein into one new agreement, which would supersede and replace those separate agreements, the superseding agreement. Such consolidation would be for administrative convenience only to reflect in one document the current terms and conditions of those individual agreements and to remove outdated, expired, and/or superseded language, and this is the new part, and would include provisions for periodic review of the superseding agreement by the town and the SSA. And, number two, enter into good faith negotiations to attempt to reach agreement on the following, A, the relinquishment by the SSA of its right of first refusal regarding the property located 200 Main Street, Hyannis, as more particularly set forth in a certain deed recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Book 9729, page 167. And, B, the granting of an easement from the SSA to the town across SSA-owned property to allow and accommodate trailer-truck access to vessels, including providing adequate turning radii, ooh, that's nice, for such vehicles at the Pleasant Street Town Dock in Hyannis. Provided further that the town manager is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute the superseding agreement as described herein and is further authorized to negotiate an agreement with respect to item two above, provided that any agreement with respect to item two shall require the approval of the town council, as written.
Second.
So, first and a second. So, this is voting on the amendment to this item. And if you could, any council discussion?
Is there a second?
Yeah, someone's seconded. Yeah. Any council discussion? Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. This amendment, that I can't see now, does refer to a periodic review undefined. So, what's envisioned?
Absolutely. I would envision, well, I don't want to speak for Attorney Nober. I would envision at least an annual review.
I would think at least.
At least annual review.
Part of the discussion.
Yeah, there's actually many details that will need to be worked out in subsequent months. What this vote basically does is authorizes the 10 feet and then tasks the two parties to work in good faith to negotiate the agreements. The two major, actually three major items were 200 Main Street, the easement of Pleasant Street, and a periodic review. But certainly, any and all counselor concerns could be brought forth in that meeting in the coming months to try and negotiate.
Thank you. And will we be able to see that final document?
Absolutely. It would be approved by you.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clark.
If I could, I should mention that the Steamship is with us today.
Yes.
Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, and then we have our members on the board, Mr. Jones, and on the Port Council, Mr. Bebriel are all with us this evening as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you for being here. Counsel Atzlis, please.
Thank you. So, just so I understand, in addition to the two items that were highlighted, or actually three items that were highlighted, we would have the opportunity during those negotiations, should there be other items that councils would want to address with the Steamship Authority, we would have that opportunity at that point.
It does task the town manager's office to do the negotiation, but certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Nober, I don't think that there's anything that says we cannot bring forth any and all concerns.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other council discussion to my left, to my right? Counsel Rap Garsetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Andy, and welcome to the Steamship Authority. I will support this item. I'm happy to see that the town manager, that we have a more robust review of the goings-on of the Steamship Authority, especially with regard to early morning freight deliveries down Pleasant Street. As I stated before, you know, that's a very tight road, but it also now benefits many residents. It has turned into a residential road with Sea Captain's Row and some other apartments being built there. So, I know our fellow residents of Woods Hole have expressed concern over the early start times with regard to freight. And I have made comment in, to the town attorney with regards to early starts with freight. And perhaps we could look at that in negotiations and have a later start, because those trucks start rolling down Pleasant Street at 4:00 a.m., and that's pretty early when you have, you know, jake brakes running down Pleasant Street. So, I would be looking for that in a negotiation with the SSA. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rap Garsetti. Anybody else? Okay, so we are voting on the amendment currently. And so, if you can signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays, abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous for the amendment. Now, we will vote on the item, again, item number 2023-139, as amended. So, same, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe that's unanimous as well. I just wanted to say thank you, Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn. Thank you for the parties in the back there from the Steamship Authority. Appreciate you. And Bob and Bud for your representation for the town of Barnstable. Thank you. And again, Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn for your really genesis of bringing this forward and really taking the reins on this to try to clean it up and bring it together and update it. So, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
May I offer something?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to say thank you to Bob Jones, particularly for the letter you wrote that answered a lot of the questions that were brought up at the last meeting. I found it very informative, very circumspect, and I think it was a real asset when it came to actually making the final decision up here. So, thank you for your service. We appreciate it. And thanks for bringing it forward. And also, Assistant Town Manager Clyburn instrumental in making it all come together. Thank you. And also, Attorney Nober for radii. It's a great word.
SAT word.
Is it Griffin?
That's awesome.
Great. Okay, moving on. Okay, item number, if we could, please, moving on further down, item number 2023-151. And if, Counsel Clark, please, to my left, if you could, item number 2023-151. That would be number 72, please. Thank you for bearing with me. Thanks for sticking around. Have a great night. Thank you.
This is agenda item 2023-151. This is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call, majority vote of the full council. This is a supplemental appropriation order in the amount of $35,000 for the purpose of paying outside council expenses of the legal department.
First and a second, we have Attorney Karen Nober for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Good evening, councilors. Karen Nober, Town Attorney. The law firm of Anderson and Krieger has been representing the town in connection This is Agenda Item 2023-151, this is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call, majority vote of the full council. This is a supplemental appropriation order in the amount of $35,000 for the purpose of paying outside council expenses of the legal department.
First and second, we have Attorney Karen Nober for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Good evening, councilors. Karen Nober, Town Attorney. The law firm of Anderson and Krieger has been representing the town in connection with two lawsuits filed against the town by the Conservation Law Foundation. The Title V lawsuit is currently stayed by the court until June 30, and the State Department of Environmental Protection has until May 31 to issue final regulations. The Clean Water Act lawsuit was dismissed in federal district court, but it was dismissed without prejudice, meaning that CLF can file another suit against the town. In February, we received CLF's notice of intent to file a new lawsuit under the Clean Water Act, and now that 60 days have elapsed, CLF can file that lawsuit at any time. This requested supplemental appropriation would be used to pay the anticipated legal costs for the initial phase of work needed to respond to such a lawsuit. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Nober. Just, sorry, I'm going to need some readers. Thank you, Counselor Clark, I think I'll be okay. Okay, you guys are all flinging glasses at me. So, this is a public hearing, so is anybody here that would like to speak to this item? Not seeing any, Director Paul, anybody?
There is no one on Zoom for this item.
Thank you very much. Then I would close the public hearing and open up for council discussion, please. Anybody? Counselor Starr, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Attorney Nober, explain to me again what DEP is, they have to make a ruling by the end of May?
DEP is working to revise the Title V regulations.
Right. Okay.
So, that's separate from the Clean Water Act lawsuit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on this side, questions for Attorney Nober? Looking to my left, anyone? Okay, not seeing any, we'll close, obviously, the council discussion and move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, roll call vote.
Councilors. Cuzak?
Yes.
Raporessetti?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Atzlos?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
12 yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, and moving on to the next item, Counselor Clark, if you could also read 2023-152, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is Agenda Item 2023-152, it's old business, requiring a public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full council. Order authorizing an intermunicipal agreement between the town of Barnstable and the town of Plymouth for professional services relating to the decommissioning of the Plymouth Nuclear Plant in Plymouth by Holtek International, and supplemental appropriation order in the amount of $23,667 for the purpose of paying the town of Barnstable's share of the costs of such professional services.
We have first and a second, and again, Attorney Karen Nober for the rationale, please, God bless you.
Thank you, President Levesque. The town council previously asked the legal department to look into what the town could do to oppose Holtek International's plan to discharge nuclear wastewater into Cape Cod Bay as part of its decommissioning of the Pilgrim Nuclear Plant in Plymouth. The legal department reached out to lawyers from Anderson and Krieger, who in this case are representing the town of Plymouth, and lawyers from Sugarman Rogers Barshak and Cohen, who are representing the Association to Preserve Cape Cod. And you've separately received a letter that was recently sent by APCC's lawyers to state environmental officials urging them to rely on the State Ocean Sanctuaries Act to prohibit Holtek from discharging nuclear wastewater into the bay. The lawyers have had a number of meetings with each other, and our group also recently met with state officials to discuss the Ocean Sanctuaries Act. The three sets of lawyers for Plymouth, APCC, and from my office interviewed two environmental and science consulting firms, and we agreed that it would be beneficial to engage the services of one of those companies, which is Gradient, to help the towns and APCC review the permit application that Holtek filed with the EPA at the end of March. Holtek is seeking modification to its NIPD's permit because the EPA has told Holtek in no uncertain terms that it currently is not permitted to discharge wastewater into the bay. And I know someone's going to ask what NIPD's is, so it's the National Pollutants Discharge Elimination System Permit. So, we are proposing to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Plymouth to share the costs of gradient services with Plymouth and APCC and Barnstable, each paying one-third, and we're seeking an appropriation of a little over $23,000. And ultimately, you know, I think we all understand, this is a fight that really is going to have to be led by the state. I don't think the town of Barnstable is going to necessarily be leading that, but we're hopeful that, and we're hopeful that the Ocean Sanctuaries Act argument will carry the day, but if not, we think it would be good to get some technical assistance to help the towns and APCC to knowledgeably review Holtek's permit application. So, that's what this request is for.
Thank you. This is also a public hearing, would anybody like to participate publicly in this item and comment? Okay, not seeing anybody, was there anybody who would like to participate remotely?
There is no one for public comment on this item.
Thank you. And so I would close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Attorney Nober. Just a question, are there any other municipalities involved in any fashion, I mean, on the Cape and East Coast?
I believe Duxbury is doing something, but they're kind of doing it on their own. That's all I'm aware of.
Anybody else on to my right? To my left? Counselor Shaughnessy, please, first.
I just wanted to comment on the fact, I wish Sandwich was part of this, but I think it's great that we're pooling resources with the Association to Preserve Cape Cod and the town of Plymouth to sort of, a three-pronged attack, so I'm glad that we're collaborating and sort of cost splitting because they're a giant and they're hard to take on.
Yeah.
Has anyone reached out to the town of Sandwich, Attorney Nober?
To the town of Sandwich?
Yeah, to see if they wanted to be part of the collaboration? No.
I don't believe so.
How were we invited, again? How was, what was the genesis of that?
We were not really invited.
Right.
The council, we had had a discussion with all of you, and you had said, see what we can do.
Correct.
And I had called Anderson and Krieger because I believe that they had knowledge about the issues, and then it turned out they were actually representing the town of Plymouth.
Thank you. And that was brought up, just so people know, it was brought up at a leadership meeting with myself and Vice President Cullum, and that we decided that it was important to place this on the agenda and get it before the full council to see if you would approve and agree with us that we need to join this fight. Again, here we are protecting our water and Cape Cod Bay specifically, so our north side, right? So, the, I just thought it was important to make sure that we, that we get some skin in the game, so to speak, and be able to help out where we can. So, again, ultimate decision, maybe not ours, but we can say that we did our part, so. Madam Vice President, please.
Has anyone approached the county at all? Do you know?
Yes, I believe the town manager has been keeping the county informed as to these discussions.
Do they feel like chipping in?
I do not know that.
Yeah. Because that would be a real regional effort, wouldn't it, to go along with APCC and...
And I also think, you know, time is a little bit of the essence here, too, and so we are definitely looking to get the company going and to get moving.
Oh, yeah, I think we should vote this through tonight, but then ask for some support.
Town Manager L's comment?
Thank you, Markell's Town Manager. Yes, I've been in direct communication with the Chair of the County Commissioners. They have sent letters, I think I've shared that, the letter, I believe, with legal. It's unclear what greater role they may play, the discussion is broadened to the Cape Cod Commission, they're aware, obviously, of this as well, unclear on their role. I'll bring this as an item before the managers administrators on Cape Cod at the next meeting to make sure that they're all aware of it, I think they are, but to get a feeling for what sort of involvement beyond the active participation, certainly Barnstable Plymouth with APCC, to see what their appetite is to participate. Thank you.
Well, I'm definitely proud to be part of it. I think we should fight it, so, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Any other comment? Okay, not seeing any, and then move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call.
Councilors. Raporessetti?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Atzlos?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Cuzak?
Yes.
12 yes, thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to move into, again, before we do our CAP, we're just going to move into our new business. Counselor Raporessetti, if you could, help me, please, item number 2023-154.
Yes, Mr. President, new business may be acted upon by a majority of vote. Item 2023-154, resolve allowing the granting of licenses for the game commonly called bingo in the town of Barnstable and approving the bingo applications of the Holy Ghost Society of Santuit and Katuit Incorporated, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Attorney Nober for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. So, I recently learned that bingo is bingo, who knew? So, under state law, certain types of organizations may apply to the State Lottery Commission for a license to conduct bingo games, and before the Lottery Commission can grant such a license, the organization must obtain approval of the application by a majority of the town council, as long as the town has already voted to allow the granting of licenses for bingo games just generally in the town. So, the Holy Ghost Society of Santuit and Katuit, which is a nonprofit corporation, which has been in existence for more than five years, is seeking approval to conduct two one-day bingo games in May, and this vote would allow the granting of licenses for bingo games in the town and would approve their application. So, it combines the two things.
Thank you. Rationale, any questions? Council discussion. Okay. Then, without seeing any further ado, then we should, if you, if you could, please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to just move over, it's just a next item, Counselor Raporessetti, if I could just stay with you, item number 2023-154.
This is new business, this is a first reading, refer to a second reading on May 4, 2023. Item 2023-180, authorization to convey 8.1 plus or minus acres of the property located at 140 Old Oyster Road in the village of Katuit, Mass. to the Katuit Fire District for nominal consideration of $1.00 and no cents. An approval and authorization of a conservation restriction on the remaining 5.4 plus or minus acres of said property to be held by the Katuit Fire District for conservation, recreation, aquifer recharge area, and water protection purposes, as written.
Second.
We have first and a second, again, referring to a second reading on May 4, 2023. If you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous. Okay, that would be the last item of new business, and I'm actually going to entertain that we just take another two-minute break, maybe three-minute break, and we'll come back and start dealing with the CIP and give the DBW a chance to set up. And again, we're going to do item number 104 first, please. And again, we're going to do item number 104 first, please. Begin to find our seats. We're going to continue. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody back to town council meeting. Moving quite, moving right along. Again, it's April 27, 2023. I see 8:35 on the clock. And right now, we are going to get into our CIP projects, items, I should say, of old business. And our first item, I did take it out of order. Counselor Schnep, if you could, please. Item number 2023-104.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of old business, requiring a public hearing, a roll call, majority vote of the full council. Item number 2023-104, appropriation order in the amount of $195,000 for the purpose of funding the Mystic Lake alum treatment project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan, as written.
Second.
First and a second. And Director DPW, Dan Santos, for the rationale, please.
Good evening. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. This project will fund the permitting and treatment of Mystic Lake with alum, including associated water quality monitoring before, during, and after the treatment. Alum application must be permitted through the Local Conservation Commission and will require additional permits to ensure environmental conditions remain safe for wildlife, including endangered species. Water quality samples will be measured before, during, and after treatment to ensure safe implementation and tracking of water quality improvements associated with the alum treatment. Mystic Lake was treated with alum in the fall of 2010, after experiencing two cyanobacteria blooms that resulted in the death of over 2 million mussels, including some endangered species. The National Heritage and Endangered Species Program restricted the alum treatment to less than what was originally proposed to control phosphorus release from the sediments of Mystic Lake. Water quality evaluations completed since 2011 have found that the 2010 alum treatment resulted in reduced phosphorus concentrations in the bottom water, but not as much as desired, based on periodic lower water clarity and occasional visible cyanobacteria accumulations. A report commissioned by the Indian Ponds Association recommends another alum treatment for Mystic Lake. Thank you.
Thank you for that rationale. And would anybody from the public like to speak on this item that hasn't spoken as of yet?
Yeah, hi. I'm Butch Roberts. I'm currently president of the Indian Ponds Association. I want to thank you all for taking the time to consider this. In the past, the town has been very supportive and has recognized that the infrastructure that we have, as someone said earlier tonight, in the three ponds, Hamlin Pond, Middle Pond and Mystic Lake, Mystic Lake being the second-largest pond in Barnstable. We've worked, the Indian Pond Association has worked over the years diligently testing the water, trying to monitor its condition. It's why we've commissioned two pond studies way before it was fashionable to have pond studies. And the town has responded very well in the past with alum treatments in Hamlin Pond and the one mentioned here in 2009, and also with the ongoing hydrolid treatments that you're currently funding. We certainly appreciate that support. We think it's extremely important, and we're hoping that you continue with that. We've heard enough tonight about the science. I won't go into that. I'm not a scientist anyway, but we have some really good people that are very good at educating the rest of the IPA board, so it's been very helpful. But cyanobacteria blooms not only endanger the mussels within the Mystic Lake and Hamlin Pond, I mean, Middle Pond, but they also pose a risk to humans and other animals as well, including the bald eagles that were mentioned earlier. But, but the other factor is, is also the economic factor. The, the recent New York Times article this last winter, talking about the, the water, poor water quality on the Cape. And then if you couple that with some anecdotal evidence of pond closures and so on, it doesn't take long for that to create a real bad image for the towns on the Cape. And, and we're particularly concerned, obviously, as homeowners around these three ponds and, and what it can mean to the economic impact of the town as well as the whole area. So in, in effort to keep this short, I will say that we really appreciate your support and, and hope you find it in your power to support this and, and to pass this article. Board member Carol Sims, formerly CEO of Spalding Cape Cod. I'd asked her to speak a little bit more in detail about some of the health risks that concern us about cyanobacteria. So if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to her.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening. I'm Carol Sim, and I thank you for letting me speak in support of this alum treatment. I speak as a registered nurse by background, a former hospital CEO, and an avid Mystic Lake kayaker. Cyanobacteria is nasty stuff. It is, swimming in it causes liver damage, kidney damage, skin rashes, GI distress, and more. Kayaking and boating also is not unsafe because it causes respiratory distress when it gets aerosolized. So these cyanotoxins are among the most powerful natural toxins that are known. Not only affects us, its effects are even greater on our dogs, causing tremors, loss of coordination, GI problems, and occasionally death. With the funding of this alum treatment, we can keep the cyanobacteria blooms at bay and can keep Mystic Lake safe for the next decade or so to be enjoyed by the entire Barnstable community. And I am very glad to report that, sitting in my sunroom this morning, I saw the first bald eagle go by. So they are back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sim. Is there anybody here in the room that would like to speak on this item? Not seeing any. Is there anybody who would like to participate remotely?
There is no one on Zoom for this item.
Thank you. Okay, open up for council discussion. Anything to my left? I would close the public hearing, excuse me about that. Closing the public hearing, anybody comment? Council Mendez, please, sorry.
As somebody who grew up in Indian Lakes, swam there my whole childhood, there in Hamlin's, I do support this. There used to be thousands and thousands and thousands of mussels and fish when I was a kid. And I think it's important for, you know, for us to get it back into good shape again, not only for the people, the residents there, but for all of us who even like to go there when we don't live there anymore. So I will support this.
Thank you, Council Mendez. Anybody else to my left? Looking to my right, Counselor Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will be supporting this measure tonight, but I did have a quick question for Director Santos. I know that the previous time that this application was a little delayed because of some of the permitting issues in the state. Do you anticipate that will happen this time, or will be able to optimize the time the treatment will be provided?
I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate that, and I do believe that we will be able to proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Counselor Schnep. Question. Anybody else in regards to this item? Okay. Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please. Janet Murphy, Assistant Town Clerk, for the roll call.
Counsel, excuse me, counselors. Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey. Yes. Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rapka Cetti.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
It's unanimous. And as, speaking as an Indian Lakes resident, I can keep that quiet, but I appreciate your efforts. My children, my son just received one of the MMVA scholarships, and he wrote his essay about fishing on Mystic Lake and his time on Mystic Lake. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for bearing with us. And thank you, Director Santos, for taking that out of order. At this point in time, actually, before we get deep dive into the rest of the items of the DPW, Mr. Santos, would you like to do some introductions, please?
Yes, thank you. I may be up here alone, but I am supported by an extremely deep bench of professionals and experts, and I just could not possibly stuff into my head everything one needs to know about all these projects, because what we do is so vast here. So I rely on them incredibly. So with that, I'd like to introduce the members of the band. Starting on visuals with Assistant Public Works Director Rob Steen. Griffin Bowden, Town Engineer. Mark Marinaccio, Town Architect. Hans Kaiser, Water Supply Division Supervisor. Andy Boulay, Water Pollution Control Division Supervisor. Tracy Rigazio, Solid Waste Division Supervisor. And here tonight, at her first town council meeting, is Kelly Collopy, our new communications manager. Thank you.
Quite the starting lineup, sir.
This is my favorite night of the year, so.
Right, absolutely. Mine too. Anywho.
Five-hour energy helps.
That's right, yeah. Exactly. Yes, wow. We're in, hey, Dan, you'll be here all night, right? Okay. Now we have, if, I'm actually going to ask Council Clark, if you could, please. Item number 2023-073.
With pleasure, President Leveque. This is Agenda Item 2023-073. It's old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Appropriation order in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of funding the final design of the Sandy Neck Facility Reconfiguration Project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan.
First and a second, Director Santos, the rationale, please.
Thank you. This request is for the final design and permitting costs for the project of the Sandy Neck Facility Reconfiguration. This project will involve a managed site reconfiguration in order to provide a more resilient, long-term solution to the existing parking lot, ORV trail, gatehouse, and other facilities at Sandy Neck Beach. A detailed analysis of the long-term viability of the Sandy Neck Public Beach Parking and Supporting Facilities was completed as part of a grant from the Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management in the fall of 2016. The analysis demonstrated that to provide adequate protection of the vertical infrastructure and maintain the viability of the parking lot, a relocation of the gatehouse and parking area was the most viable alternative. In order to supplement the information contained in the report, the town retained the Woods Hole Group to prepare a more detailed evaluation of alternatives to manage the parking lot, gatehouse, and off-road vehicle trail. The updated alternatives analysis and conceptual designs were presented at The updated alternatives analysis and conceptual designs were presented at public meetings in January 2023 and April 2023, ultimately resulting in a recommendation to relocate the gatehouse and parking lot infrastructure, leaving the off-road vehicle trail in its existing location. The recommended solution is currently undergoing preliminary design and initial permitting, which is funded by FY23 CZM Coastal Zone Resiliency Grant. This funding request will complete the final designs and prepare a Bib plan set, which will make the project more likely to receive grant funds and will put the town in a position to act quickly should a future storm damage the existing parking lot and facilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the rationale. And this is a public hearing. Anybody in the room would like to speak on this item? Director Poyant, is there anybody who would like to speak remotely?
There is not.
Okay, so I would close the public hearing. Open for council discussion, please. Looking to my left, looking to my right. Counsel Star, please.
Thank you, President Leveque. I just want to commend the DPW and MEA and everybody who worked on this. We've had two public meetings in Barnstable Village, and the feedback was wonderful and the design, you know, improved as we had meetings and feedback. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Counsel Star. Counsel Schnep, did you have your hand up?
I did, but it's just a quick question.
Sure.
This seems like a small amount of money for a final design. Did you, is it because of all the work that's preceded it that it?
Yes. Yeah, this is just to finish it up.
Okay, great.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, not seeing any. I would move to a vote, please. Yes, please. Roll call, I'm sorry. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Counselors. Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
12 yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rap Kersetti, please, if you could. Item number 2023-074.
This is old business, public hearing with a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item 2023-074, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $195,000 for the purpose of funding the design of the Prince Cove Improvements Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
Prince Cove Marina is a popular town-owned marina with access to Prince Cove. However, the marina is in need of improvements and is lacking modern facilities. The marina building is underutilized, in need of rehabilitation, and requires upgraded and accessible restrooms. The marina does not have a boat waste holding tank pump-out station. Wastewater solutions will be evaluated to accommodate the improved restrooms and pump-out station in order to prevent continued nutrient loading to Prince Cove. The parking area is poorly laid out, needs to be expanded, and new stormwater management structures should be installed. We're going to explore the feasibility of expanding the floating dock system in order to accommodate additional vessels and use of the facility. Project will provide design and permitting for improvements to Prince Cove Marina, including installation of new wastewater solutions as appropriate, installation of a new boat pump-out facility, renovation of the existing building, including bathroom improvements, parking lot improvements, and expansion replacement of the floating docks. We anticipate that the construction of the project will be completed in phases. Thank you.
Thank you. This is also a public hearing. Is anyone here who would like to speak on this item? Not seeing any. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this item remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Thank you. And so I would close the public hearing and open for council discussion, please. Looking to my right. Counsel Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple questions, and I don't know if you have all the information. Do we recall what the cost of acquisition for the, this marina?
I don't have that information. I'm sure I could get it. Someone else here may have it, and I'll let them speak up.
Right, I was just curious. I know from using the facility, the bathrooms are just unbelievable, so much needed. Do you anticipate any additional operational costs when you complete all these projects, this project?
It depends, I would presume, on if we expand the dock system and we're accommodating more vessels. I imagine there would be some additional operating costs associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, questions? Looking to my left, anybody? I also wanted to recognize in the room Director of MEA Derek Lawson and also Park Manager extraordinaire Nina Coleman. And in your excellent service to the town, and thanks for being here, I just wanted to recognize you. You're also part of that all-star lineup, so. Any other council discussion? Then I would move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call.
Counselors. Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
12 yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Snapp, please, if you could. Item number 2023-075.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full council. Appropriation order in the amount of $172,000 for the purpose of funding the design and permitting of the Barnstable Harbor Marine Revetment Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. This is number 2023-075.
Second.
First and a second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
The revetment reinforces the western bank of Barnstable Harbor Marina, protecting it from erosion and scouring. In turn, the revetment protects the access road immediately above the revetment, which serves public and private facilities. And the revetment maintains adequate area and water depth in the inner marina for numerous vessels to navigate in berth. The revetment has been inspected and is showing signs of erosion and degradation. The project's scope includes removing the slope armoring on the west bank, resetting existing or installing new buttress boulders, resetting existing or installing new slope armoring on a geotextile and aggregate base, and filling voids, increasing the elevation of the top of revetment to address the erosion and reduce risks of overtopping, improving drainage and correcting erosion along the access road above the revetment. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Not seeing any. Was there anyone that'd like to speak remotely?
There is not.
Then I would close the public hearing and open for council discussion, please. Looking to my left, anybody? To my right, any questions on this item? Counsel Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you, Director Santos, could you remind me when the bulkhead repair was done at this harbor? And is there any relationship between the revetment and the bulkhead, or is it completely separate parts in that harbor?
Yeah, they're independent structural parts of the harbor. I'm going to turn to the manager for the date of the, when the bulkhead was installed.
No, I remember. I'd have to get the date of mid 2000s.
2009?
Yeah, I'd have to.
I was going to say it was before 2009. That's when I was.
Oh, so it's been a while. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other council discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Move to a vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, please, for the roll call.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Thank you, 12.
Thank you. That passes. Counsel Snapp, please. Staying with you, Council 20, item number, rather, 2023-076.
Thank you. This is number 2023-076. It's called for a public hearing with a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $496,000 for the purpose of funding the Scudders Lane Boat Ramp Reconstruction Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, 2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
A first and a second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
This project is to replace the existing failing asphalt boat ramp and associated parking lot and make stormwater management improvements. The boat ramp is very old and the asphalt is collapsing, creating a safety hazard. The failing boat ramp may eventually render the ramp unusable, restricting the important access for recreational and commercial shellfish users. In November 2022, DPW conducted a public information meeting in which attendees provided helpful comments on various potential elements of the project. Following the meeting, DPW and their consulting engineer, Pear Corporation, prepared preliminary plans consistent with the project needs and public input. The draft plans have gone through several iterations in order to address regulatory requirements, best practices, and public comments. The plans will be available for review in May. Since the boat ramp is deteriorated and the construction project is anticipated to be six to 12 months out due to the remaining design and permitting tasks, DPW is currently evaluating the need to perform low-cost interim maintenance paving. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Does anybody in the audience like to speak on this item? Not seeing any. Director Poyant, anybody?
There is no one for this item.
And I would close the public hearing. Open for council discussion. Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Leveque, and thank you very much, Director Santos, for this update. I hear that you say the plans will be available in May, so will there be another public informational meeting?
We can do that, to go over the final plans. We've had two meetings, as I'm sure you know, and we've gotten very valuable input, so we will certainly continue in that vein.
I've had people ask, so thank you.
Sure.
Any other council discussion questions? To my right, Counsel Rap Kersetti, please.
Dan, are you planning to put asphalt back there, or so not pervious, not a pervious ramp?
No, asphalt.
Asphalt, but you're going to do some stormwater management above it?
Yes, and one of the primary comments from those that we met with was that they wanted minimal intervention at the site. They really didn't want, you know, major overly done. And so we've kept that in mind and really are kind of replacing what's there and updating that.
Are you going to widen Scudder Lane? No, I'm only kidding.
We'll keep it cut back as best as we can.
Yes.
Any other questions, council discussion? Can close the public hearings, so we will move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, please.
Counselors. Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
12 yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Cuzack, please. Item number 2023-077.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is old business, public hearing with roll call vote, majority of the full council. This is item number 2023-077, an appropriation order in the amount of $90,000 for the purpose of funding the Little River Fish Passage Restoration Evaluation Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
The objective of this project is to undertake a comprehensive evaluation of the work that may be required to restore and improve the ecological health of Little River by enhancing and naturalizing the existing river in the context of the current landscape. The river was once a viable and successful herring run, but due to alterations in river flow, herring populations no longer exist in the system. American eel have also been observed in the system, but it is unlikely that they are able to pass the Levels Pond due to the numerous physical obstructions that restrict flow, especially during times of low water. This evaluation is the first step in making this system a thriving fish passage once again. Understanding restoration requirements will put the town in position to seek potential future grant funding. Little River was historically a vibrant herring run with fish traveling to spawn in Levels Pond in Kootu'at. However, current conditions prohibit the migration of fish into the herring run in multiple locations, most notably at the head of the river at Levels Pond, but also at multiple culverts that have been installed throughout the system. The town's Natural Resources Department worked with the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries to perform a two-year habitat assessment on Levels Pond to determine if the pond provides favorable spawning habitat and water quality for herring. The results of the assessment were satisfactory, and the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries has provided a letter of support to the town and a memorandum summarizing the results of the study. Thank you.
Thank you. And is anybody here that would like to speak towards this, to this item? Not seeing any. Do we have anybody that would like to participate remotely? Director Poyant.
There is no one for this item.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing. Bring it back to council discussion. Anybody to my left? Anybody to my right? Counsel Rap Kersetti, please.
I'm just very happy to see this item come before the council. I look forward to eventually seeing the herring run there again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Schnep.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also excited, is one of the parts of the feasibility study to deal with the probably lots of different property ownerships that are along the riverway and our ability to get easements?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Counsel Schnep. Any other, any other council discussion? Again, closing the public hearing. And move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call.
Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
12 yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Cuzack, if you could, please. Staying with you, item number 2023-078.
Right, yeah, old business, Mr. President, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. This is item number 2023-078, an appropriation order in the amount of $225,000 for the purpose[1605.76] purpose of funding the Rosa Lane Fish Passage Culvert Replacement Design Project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
First and the second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
The Marson's Mills River is an active herring run and supports the town's largest herring counts every year. In recent years, up to 80,000 fish have been counted entering Mill Pond on their way to Middle Pond. The culvert under Rosa Lane is undersized and restrictive to fish passage. In order to improve fish passage, this culvert needs to be replaced with a larger culvert. This project will design and permit the replacement of the culvert under Rosa Lane in order to improve fish passage in the Marson's Mills River. The project is located on private property, which will require the town to secure easements to perform the work. Securing the easements, designs, and permits for this project will put the town in a position to obtain grant funds. This project is listed on the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Project Priorities list, and as such is in position for grant funding from the NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this item? Not seeing any. Director Poyant, back to you, anyone?
There is no one for this item.
Okay, then we close the public hearing, open for council discussion. Anyone? How is the easement process going for, on the private property?
On this one?
Yeah. I know it's private property, I know this.
This is not the one that we had talked about previously.
Right.
But we haven't started on this one.
Okay, just checking, yeah, because I know there was some challenges with the other one, yeah, so.
It's a process.
Yes, I understand.
And I'm optimistic we'll make our way through it.
Excellent. I just, you know, so I'd want to take, you know, I take the time to say there's a lot that goes into this and work and really reaching out to people and stuff, and I know challenges that happened in previous projects, and so there's more that goes into this, and I think the public needs to understand that there's a lot to appreciate. It's not just checking a box and getting a dollar amount, so on and so forth. It's really getting people to buy in and saying that this is better for our community, better for our environment, so I appreciate the steps taken to make these things happen. All right, any other council discussion? Not seeing any. Again, closing the public hearing and roll call majority vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Atzless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Atzless, please, 2023-079.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of old business. Item number 2023-079, appropriation order in the amount of $125,000 for the purpose of funding the Lake Elizabeth Fish Run Dam and Culvert Replacement Design Project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. This is a public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full council.
Second.
First and the second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
For at least the last six years, river herring counts at Lake Elizabeth have found no fish are able to enter the pond. Previous evaluations have identified barriers impeding fish passage into Lake Elizabeth. First, the culvert under Lake Elizabeth Drive is undersized and is generally impassable by fish. Second, in the event some fish make it past the culvert, they become trapped at the dam and fish ladder located at the outlet of Lake Elizabeth. Several attempts have been made to repair and improve the dam and fish ladder to allow fish passage with little success. Unfortunately, flow and geologic conditions in this area require significant reconstruction to provide fish passage. In order to restore fish passage and create spawning habitat for river herring, the culvert under Lake Elizabeth Drive needs to be replaced and the dam and fish ladder into Lake Elizabeth reconstructed. The CIP request will cover the remaining design and permitting required for conveying river herring into and out of Lake Elizabeth. The project will include replacement of the culvert under Lake Elizabeth Drive and reconstruction of the dam and fish ladder into Lake Elizabeth. The Red Lily Pond Protective Association, a nonprofit organization in this area, has expended thousands of dollars for design work on the dam and fish ladder in their partnership with the town on this project. They have also indicated that they are willing to secure the necessary easements and permits to allow the town to conduct this work. The town still needs to design and permit the culvert portion of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this item in this room? Not seeing any. Is there anybody like to participate remotely?
We do.
Yes, I would think you would.
Yes, we have Doug Farquhar. Mr. Farquhar, you may unmute.
Thank you very much, and I've already spoken, so I would just be happy to answer any questions about where we are in the process now or any other questions that council members may have, and I won't waste your time with repeating what I said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you for making yourself available, sir. And is there anybody else who would like to participate remotely? Director Poyant, is there anybody else?
No, I'm sorry, that's all.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it, and we would close the public hearing, knowing that Mr. Farquhar is available for questions, and so closing the public hearing and open for council discussion. Counselor Atzless, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you all probably received this from Patricia Dayton. She's the president of the Red Lily Pond Project Association, also known as RLPPA. I am not going to read this whole thing to you, but I think it's important for you to know a few things about this, some of which Director Santos already highlighted, but given that this is actually in my backyard a little early, I taught my kids how to ride their bikes on Lake Elizabeth. That's my regular route when I take my dog and myself for walks, and it definitely needs this improvement. But if I may, just a couple of excerpts from here. The major problem with the lake is that the herring are unable to navigate a failed wooden dam and eroded fish ladder to spawn in the lake. Historically, hundreds of herring would spawn each spring until the dam failed. The dam and fish ladder, when constructed, will provide a permanent viable path for herring to spawn again with an attractive natural design of pools and boulders that will ease the path for alewife herring to renew their voyage into the lake, leading to restoration of the wildlife population and diversity that once graced the body of water designated as a Great Lake. The renewed natural revitalization of the lake and eventually of the neighboring Red Lily Pond will also generate a renewed appreciation of Cape Cod's natural resources for the residents of our village, the hundreds of visitors who walk or bike through our community, and the thousands of individuals who visit Craigville from around Massachusetts and around the country year-round. So it is a very, it's a small but passionate group, and they've done some wonderful work getting it to this point, and I will fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Atzless. Any other council discussion? Okay. Again, closing the public hearing. Counselor Clark, did you have a question? Okay, sorry. And moving to a vote, please, Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Counselors. Atzless.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Can we just make sure for the next vote, the candidates are back on?
Sure.
Thank you.
And thank you.
I, for one, due to a speech impediment, are quite happy that we're done with fish run projects.
Yes. Beautiful.
I think you were framed. Somebody knew.
That being said, Counselor Atzless, please, continuing with you, item number 2023-080.
Great, I get the one that says dinghy in it. This is an item of old business, item number 2023-080, appropriation order in the amount of $295,000 for the purpose of funding the McCarthy's Landing Dinghy Dock Construction Project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. This is a public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full council.
Second.
First and the second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
This project is to replace the existing dinghy dock at McCarthy's Landing. The existing dinghy dock that is affixed to the pier at McCarthy's Landing is in need of replacement. The dock is utilized by residents to tie up small vessels, which are then utilized to access their larger vessels that are on moorings in the Centerville River. The dock is in a state of disrepair and requires replacement. In addition, the dock is currently accessed by a wooden ladder, which will be replaced with a new gangway to improve access. Permitting requirements for a dock are relatively significant and include Conservation Commission, Army Corps of Engineering, DEP Chapter 91 License, and potentially MEPA Review. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody here would like to speak on this item? Not seeing any. Do we have anybody who would like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
That being said, to close the public hearing and open for council discussion. Anybody to my right? Counselor Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the dinghy dock just that piece that comes out of the pier?
Yes.
Expensive little dinghy dock. What makes it so?
Honestly, there's a lot wrapped up in the permitting of this project.
Okay, so that's all included in that. And who actually benefits from this dinghy dock? Who gets access to this dock? Is it a free, is it first come, first served, or is it?
I think I turn to Director Lawson to help us answer that question.
Derek Lawson, Director of Marine and Environmental Affairs. So the folks that have access to this dinghy dock, it is on a first come, first serve basis. What they need to do is purchase a small vessel permit, which allows them to tie up to the dock, and then they take their small vessels up to the larger vessels. There's approximately 20 to, I believe, 30 moorings out there.
So how many dinghies can actually be on that dinghy dock?
If you look at the picture, the way it's currently constructed, there are quite a few. They go around the back and around the front, and the configuration for the new dinghy dock is still to be determined.
Okay, so from a year-to-year basis, it could be different people who get access to it, or?
The moorings holders out there are pretty consistent. They tend to hold on to their moorings, especially in that location, and it's great access to Nantucket Sound and to fishing out there, so it's pretty much the same folks every year.
So do you have to have a mooring in order to be able to use the dinghy dock?
Yes, that is correct.
There's, okay, so there's no other required payment to be on the dinghy dock? You just, as long as you pay for a mooring, you get access to the dinghy dock?
Correct. You're at a reduced rate if you own a mooring. You pay $25, and other areas, not this area, you pay 50 if you do not have a mooring. So that, not in this area.
Could you say that again?
So folks in larger areas where there's more storage, folks that do not have a mooring may place a small vessel. That permit is $50. Folks that have a mooring permit get a reduced rate for 25.
To be on the dinghy dock.
To be on the dinghy dock, correct.
So someone couldn't just, like, get a spot for their kayak on this dinghy dock?
To place your kayak?
Yeah.
Okay, there are specific rules for small vessel permits. The vessels have to be 10 feet and under, so kayaks usually aren't that small, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schnep. Any other comment? Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Move to a vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzless.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rap Grissette, please, if you could, item number 2023-081.
This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority of full council, item 2023-081, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the design and permitting of the Ktowat Town Dock Improvements Project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan, as written.
Second.
First and the second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
This project would fund replacement of the Ktowat Town Dock to increase the dock's current weight capacity to accommodate the loading associated with historic usage. In a 2021 assessment of the Ktowat Town Dock, determined that the allowable weight limit should be restricted to under 10,000 pounds. As a result, vehicles have been restricted from using the dock. Previous operations for masting and demasting sailboats and other operations utilize vehicles with weights in excess of 10,000 pounds. A follow-up alternatives analysis concluded that the dock will require total replacement within the next three to five years. And the estimated cost to replace the dock with the original increased rating is only 7% more than a replacement dock not having vehicular access. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody here for public comment? Not seeing any, anybody like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing on this item and open for council discussion. Anybody to my right? Counselor Rap Grissette, please.
Happy to see this on the CIP as well. You know, at Christmas time, everybody was all concerned when Santa came on the boat with all of the hundred or hundreds of people and kids. Would they be able to see Santa come off the boat, right onto the dock? Yep, it worked okay, but it's good that we're improving this, and I know we've spent money in the past on looking at expansion of the town dock, and that's going to be part of this, or, no? Has that been decided that we're not going to expand the town dock at all?
I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay. Mark, do you know anything about that? Because I know we appropriated money for looking at design to expand that for commercial, to accept, you know, when we're going to try to grow more oysters in North Bay and allow a little bit more commercial activity there, so we're not looking at changing the footprint of the dock.
Mark, House Town Manager, separate projects, this is for the evaluation. We'll come back with you for an update of any future potential expansion. Okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rap Grissette. Thank you, Tom Andrewellis. Any other questions? Counselor Schnep, please.
This is somewhat of a follow-up. I know that one of the concerns with the dock is with flooding and with the way the road comes down and the dock, is there any way that the dock can be raised, or is that going to be an issue?
Well, we'll look at all that.
Okay.
We're not just going to.
You are going to look at, gotcha.
Yeah, it'll be designed for current situation and standards.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Schnep. Any other questions in regards to this item? Okay, not seeing any. Again, close the public hearing and roll call, majority vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, please.
Counselors. Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rap Grissette, if you could, please, help me with one more item, item number 2023-082.
This is old business, a public hearing, roll call, majority vote, full council, item 2023-082, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of funding the license plate reader technology project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan, as written.
Second.
First and the second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
Thank you. This request is for the purchase and installation of license plate reader technology. Use of this technology, which is in place at a number of Cape Town transfer stations, will improve the efficiency of the permitting and entry processes at the transfer station. This technology will eliminate the need for the use of windshield stickers and will significantly reduce processing time associated with sticker sales and provide improved account management for our customers. It will also allow gate attendants to focus on monitoring incoming materials instead of checking vehicles for valid stickers. License plate readers will also provide accurate data on customer use of the facility, which can be very helpful in improving operations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody like to speak on this item? Anybody like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing, open for council discussion. Council Starr, please.
I'd just like to quickly say I'm in support of this idea. I think it's, the gate guards have enough to do as it is. And there are more and more banned materials that come in and they can do more education instead of watching through four cars buzzing by. So I support it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Council Starr. Anybody else? Council Cuzak, please.
Are fines attached to this? For those who might be not doing?
No, we, the, we don't have fines, but the gate guards will be notified, however the system does that. And then we would go to the vehicle and explain that they need to pay and they can pay per day or, you know, the whole, provide that information. But we don't have fines.
So something doesn't come out of the ground that pops at tires or anything like that?
Would you, would you like that to be included in the design?
Just trying to participate. So any other council discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call vote, please.
Councilors. Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Neary, please, if you could. Item number 2023-083.
My pleasure, Mr. President. This is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call, majority vote. It's item number 2023-083. It's an appropriation order in the amount of $50,000, same amount, for the purpose of funding the container replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year, through fiscal year 2028, capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
First and a second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
This project will replace two containers, the compact household trash and recyclables for hauling and disposal. The current containers are nearing the end of their useful life and beginning to show wear and tear and deterioration. They have large areas of rust and corrosion and their support structure and frames are beginning to be compromised. If the containers continue to deteriorate, they will reach a point where they are no longer safe to use. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Anybody like to participate in public comment? Not seeing any, anyone like to participate remotely? Please, Director Polian.
There is no one for this item.
Thank you. And close the public hearing, open for council discussion, please. Look to my left, anybody? Look to my right. Council Neary, did you have your hand up? Okay. All right, seems to be pretty self-explanatory. Lots of good graphics in the book. And moving to a vote, please, Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Councilors. Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could, please, Council Neary, item number 2023-084.
Yes, Mr. President. This is, again, old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call, two-thirds, full council vote. It's item number 2023-084. It is appropriation, transfer, and loan order in the amount of $1,750,000 for the purpose of funding the pump station rehabilitation project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2028, capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
First and a second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
The purpose of this project is to carry out critical repairs to the town sewage pump stations as identified in the town's 2019 wastewater pump station asset management plan. The focus in fiscal year 24 is the rehabilitation of the Ocean Street, Bay Shore Road, Gosnoll Street, Mark's Path, Bursers Way, and vacuum sewer pump stations. The repairs plan will include mechanical and electric repairs aimed to extend the useful life of these stations by another 30 years while also targeting coastal resiliency improvements to harden the pump stations and protect against extreme flood events. The Bursers Way and vacuum sewer pump station repairs will improve HVAC and odor control systems. The Mark's Path pump station will undergo design for future improvements that are necessary to address both the condition of the pump station and its capacity to accept future flows. The 2019 pump station asset management plan evaluated 27 town-owned pump stations and prioritized the necessary improvements over a 20-year planning cycle. The pump stations were evaluated based on equipment condition, age, capacity, coastal resiliency, and energy efficiency. And the necessary repairs were prioritized based on the likelihood and consequence of pump station failure. The Ocean Street, Bay Shore Road, and Gosnoll pump stations were constructed in 1968. These pump stations fall within the 100-year flood zone and require resiliency improvements to protect against coastal flooding and to allow for quicker recovery after major storm events. The Bursers Way and vacuum sewer pump stations have ventilation and odor control systems that are nearing the end of their design lives and are in need of upgrades. The Mark's Path pump station was constructed in 1989 and is approaching the end of its design life. The asset management plan has identified this pump station as being at its pumping capacity and unable to accept new flows. The town's comprehensive wastewater management plan will add new flows to the Mark's Pump Path pump station, so design efforts will seek to improve the capacity of this pump station as well as its condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos, for the rationale. This is a public hearing. Anybody here like to speak to this item?
There is no one for this item on Zoom.
Thank you. Read my mind. And so I would close the public hearing. And anyone else for council discussion, please? Not seeing any. Okay. Assistant Town Clerk, move to a vote.
Councilors. Levek.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Town Manager Markell's up for the next item.
Good evening, Markell's Town Manager. Quick note prior to the statement I'll make is that in your budget book, under your budget sheets, the last item for every sheet will say whether there's operating costs associated with a capital project. So I know Council Schnep asked that. Certainly, you may have questions about that, but just for your future reference. It's an important consideration for us, so we include it right, right in the budget request. Okay? Rather, the, the data sheet relevant to the capital project. Again, Markell's Town Manager require, or withdrawing item 2023-085, appropriation order in the amount of 4.5 million for the purposes of funding the water pollution control facility improvement projects as outlined in our fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028, capital improvement plan. Been advised by the Department of Public Works that these projects are best completed as part of other projects in the future. Thank you. So I just need your acknowledgement that I'm withdrawing this one.
Okay. And do we need to vote on that?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so. I didn't think so. Moving right along. Thank you so much. Council Mendez, if you could, please. Item number 2023-086.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business. This is item number 2023-086, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $800,000 for the purpose of funding the downtown Hyannis Force Main Rehabilitation Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028, capital improvement plan. So public hearing, roll call, majority, two-thirds of the full council.
Second.
We got a first and a second. And Director Santos, the rationale, please.
The Ocean Street, Bay Shore Road Pump Station Force Main is approaching 90 years in age and is past the end of its expected design life. The Old Colony Road Pump Station Force Main is approaching 70 years old and is nearing the end of its design life. These mains are critical components of the downtown Hyannis Sewer Collection System, transporting over 850,000 gallons per day of sewage to the wastewater pollution control facility. These two force mains are interconnected with a valve cluster at the intersection of South Street and Ocean Street, allowing each force main to back up the other in the event of an emergency. There are several available options for the rehabilitation of these pipes and a proper assessment will determine which method is the most cost-effective and least disruptive for the town. Options may include pipe bursting, pipe relining, a traditional dig and replacement, or a combination of these methods. The purpose of this project is to complete an evaluation of the alternatives, survey, and design for the rehabilitation or replacement of the Ocean Street, Bay Shore Road, and Old Colony Pump Station force mains. Once a preliminary analysis of alternatives is completed and the preferred rehabilitation method is identified, the project will be designed and prepared for bidding. The goal of this project is to extend the life of these force mains by another 50-plus years. These improvements will also help to provide redundancy to these critical pump components of the downtown Hyannis Sewer Collection System. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this item? Not seeing any, anybody like to participate remotely?
Well, we have no one for, public comment for this item. We have been informed that today is Water Pollution Control Supervisor Andy Boulay's 40th birthday. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Andy. Happy birthday to you.
How red can someone get?
Maybe I'll do that for a living. So, yeah, definitely. I'll just stick with this. So anyway, happy birthday. Thank you for that. This comic relief, I can't, can't, it's great. Love it. Yeah, exactly. You remember this all your life. So that being said, I will close the public hearing and we will move to council discussion. Anybody to my left like to comment on this item? Anybody to my right? Okay, not seeing any. We should see more often. Moving to a vote, Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, please.
Councilors. Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, Council Mendez, please, if you could. Item number 2023-087.
Yes, Mr. President. This is old business. This is item number 2023-088. Appropriation order.
Eight seven.
Oh. I apologize.
That's okay.
2023, I checked, trying to, you know, make it go quicker. 2023-087. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $30,900,000 for the purpose of funding the Park City Wind Sewer Expansion Construction Project as outlined on, in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028, capital improvement plan. This is a public hearing, roll call, two-thirds, vote, full council.
Second.
First and a second. Director Santos, the rationale, please.
Since we finalized the capital program and printed the books, we've actually changed the name of this project to the Centerville Village Sewer Expansion Project to better reflect the area being sewered and to be consistent with our naming convention. This project will fund the installation of sewer infrastructure in Centerville along the proposed Park City Wind Duck Bank Route. Additionally, sewer infrastructure will be installed from the intersection of Old Stage and Main Street to the proposed pump station in the area of Mother's Park and from Route 28 southerly on Finney's Lane to the proposed pump station in the area of Mother's Park as well. The project will require the installation of at least six new sewer pump stations. The Centerville Village Sewer Expansion is located within areas identified in the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan as requiring sewer expansion. Similar to the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project, which was designed and executed in coordination with the Vineyard Wind Construction, there will be cost savings, efficiencies, and reduced disturbance realized by installing sewers in coordination with the Park City Project. The host agreement with Avengrid requires them to repave all of the disturbed roadways, which will be result, which will result in substantial savings to the town sewer expansion project. The southern portion of the project is identified in the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan as a needs area for nitrogen removal within the Centerville River watershed based on Massachusetts Estuary Program modeling. The northerly portions of the project are a needs area for pond protection as residences in this area are located in close proximity to Lake Wauquott. This project will install approximately 5.3 miles of sewers, connect approximately 350 properties to municipal sewer, collect approximately 66,000 gallons per day of wastewater, and remove approximately 6.6 kilograms per day of nitrogen from the Centerville River watershed. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. And this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Not seeing any, any public comment?
There is no one for, on Zoom for this item.
Okay, any other birthdays? All right, moving along. We will close the public hearing. Is there any council discussion on this very large item? Council Starr, please.
Thank you, President Levek. So, Mr. Santos, does this, does this expansion go up Shoot Flying Hill at all? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. He was, he was nodding. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It doesn't say that, does it?
Well, it's, it, it's following the route. So we haven't outlined the exact route in, in this.
Okay, so it's the dark purple that we're looking at in the book, all of that. But it does, does it go down the long, down to the beach? Yes? Okay. It's huge. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions on that?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you, Council Starr.
Okay.
Yeah. And Council Schnep?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
The next four items are all CWMP expansion projects, and I did a little bit of penciling of, you know, the cost per mile and property. And there's quite a wide, you know, variance. I'm assuming that this project, because it has to cover the cost of six new pump, sewer pump stations, is the reason why its cost per property is closing in on 90,000?
I'm going to invite Town Engineer up.
Good evening. Griffin Bowden, Town Engineer. Yes, you hit the nail on the head. There's six pump stations included in the project. We usually assume there's going to be about two per mile, or, I'm sorry, one per every two miles of sewer expansion. However, this project, being linear in nature and not necessarily being designed systematically in a, in a sewer collection area because we're following the route, results in us having to have more pump stations along the route. So it sets up, in the future, we'll have savings as, when we do collection areas that feed to this. But that's, that's the reason why you're seeing more pump stations per mile in this particular project.
And did you say because we're following this route, because we're going along Park City Winds?
That's right. Because we're following that route, it's a linear project, so it's not necessarily being designed along logical boundaries based on topography, which is how you would normally design a project like this. So in order to kind of follow those routes, there are kind of additional considerations as we go through the design and ultimately more pump stations as a result.
Okay. There's a difference between the removal or the amount of gallons per day for all these projects. Is there, is that based on modeling that bedroom sizes? Or why would some be like 110 and some be 190?
Do you mean per residence, if you do the math out? Yeah, so it's based upon water use data. So we actually have the water use data for every property in town over the course of a five-year period. We averaged it out. And that's how we calculated the projected flows in the CWMP. So we literally have, if there's 500 properties in the project, we have the computer calculate what the flow is over that five-year period in the whole area. So we don't just assume certain flows for properties. So we basically go off the hard data we're actually getting.
And then your ability to remove nitrogen is based on that, it falls from that?
It's a direct calculation from the wastewater usage. Yeah.
Okay. It's a big, big dollar. Thank you.
Yes, it is. Council Rap Grecetti, please.
Just good, you know, your operating budget impact now or in the future. I, I hope you find a new engineer, full-time engineer. Thank you.
An additional.
I, yeah, I apologize. Griffin knew exactly what I was referring to. He was behind you.
I didn't have any problem with what he said. Anyone else for a comment, please? Okay, not seeing any. Move to a vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call, please.
Councilors. Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Atslis, please. Item number 2023-088.
This is an item of old business, item number 2023-088. Appropriation order in the amount of $1,500,000 for the expense of funding the design and permitting of the Old Craigville Road Sewer Expansion Project as outlined in fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028, capital improvement plan. This is a public hearing, roll call, two-thirds, vote, full council.
Second.
First and a second, Council, I'm sorry, Director Santos, the rationale, please.
This project will expand municipal sewer to properties located on Old Craigville Road and adjacent neighborhoods. Project will include the installation of mostly gravity sewer, some low-pressure sewer, and at least one municipal pump station. The properties served will feed to the infrastructure to be installed as part of the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project. This request is to fund final design of the project. Construction is anticipated to begin in fiscal year 2026. The northern portions of the project area have been identified as a needs area for nitrogen removal within the Centerville River watershed as well as drinking water protection. The southerly portion of the project area has been identified as a needs area for pond protection as residences in this area are located in close proximity to Red Lily Pond in Lake Elizabeth and are completely dependent upon a onsite solution to address their wastewater. As a result, the project area was identified as a needs area for nitrogen removal and pond protection, and the project has been identified in Phase 1 of the CWMP as requiring sewer expansion. This project will install approximately 6.6 miles of sewers, connect approximately 440 properties to the municipal sewer, collect approximately 49,000 gallons per day of wastewater, and remove approximately 4.9 kilograms per day of nitrogen from the Centerville River watershed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the rationale. And this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Is anybody online wanting to speak to?
There is no one for this item.
Okay, nobody remotely. So we would close the public hearing, come back to the council for discussion. Anybody to my right? Okay, anybody to my left? Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call.
Councilors. Neary.
Yes.
Schnep. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
12 yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sticking with Counsel Atzlis, please. Item number 2023-089.
This is an item of old business, item number 2023-089. Appropriation order in the amount of $350,000 for the purpose of funding the preliminary design and survey of the Long Beach Sewer Expansion Project, as outlined in fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. This is a public hearing. Roll call, majority vote of the full council.
Second.
First and second. Director Santos with the rationale, please.
This project will expand sewer to properties in the vicinity of Craigville Beach, Long Beach, Short Beach, and Lake Elizabeth. This project will include both gravity sewer and low-pressure sewer, at least one municipal pump station, and the decommissioning of the shared septic system near Lake Elizabeth. This project was identified in Phase 1 of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. Construction is anticipated to begin in fiscal year 2027. Residents in this area are completely dependent on onsite solutions to address their wastewater. Many of the properties in this area are within flood zones and velocity zones, and have high groundwater, making replacing onsite systems very expensive. Additionally, the project will eliminate the need to maintain the Lake Elizabeth Shared Septic System. The project will utilize the sewer infrastructure being installed as part of the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project, and the sewers associated with the Park City Wind Route Sewer Expansion Project, further utilizing the investment in those assets. As a result, this project was identified in Phase 1 of the CWMP. Project will install approximately 2.5 miles of sewers, connect approximately 160 properties to municipal sewer, collect approximately 31,000 gallons per day of wastewater, and remove approximately 3.1 kilograms per day of nitrogen. Thank you.
And this is a public hearing. Thank you for the rationale. And it's a public hearing. Anybody here to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Anybody here, anybody wanting to speak remotely? Director Poyant.
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing. Open up for council discussion, please. Not seeing any.
Yeah, but just have a.
Yes, sir.
So, the picture that's in the budget book is incorrect. The one that's on the screen is the correct area.
Oh, I see. Yes.
Is the data in the budget book correct? Is that 160 properties?
Yeah, yes.
It is.
Thank you for the clarification. Can we close the public hearing? We also gave Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy a moment, and if we could do the roll call, vote, please.
Counselors. Schnepp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rapgrusetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
12 yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to make a note, Counsel Atzlis has left the dais, and moving on to our next item, Counsel Shaughnessy, if you could, please. Item number 2023-090.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is old business, subject to public hearing, and a roll call, majority vote of the full council. This is item number 2023-090. Appropriation order in the amount of $650,000 for the purpose of funding the final design and permitting of the Old Yarmouth Road Sewer Expansion Project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. Ezra.
Second.
First and second. Director Santos with the rationale, please.
Thank you. This project will expand municipal sewer to the north of Route 28 and east of Yarmouth Road. This project will provide municipal sewer to businesses and residences on Old Yarmouth Road, Yarmouth Road, Jokem Road, Bodick Road, Rosary Lane, Fern Dock Street, and Route 28, from Cedar Street to the town line. The Planning and Development Department has identified this area as a region requiring sewer expansion to promote economic development. Businesses and residences in this area are completely dependent on onsite solutions to address their wastewater, which has restricted economic growth in the area. Additionally, the proposed sewer expansion area is entirely located within the Zone 2 to the Hyannis Water Systems Mark drinking water wells, which have experienced contamination over the years. As a result, this project was identified in Phase 1 of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan to address economic development and drinking water protection. This project will install approximately 3.2 miles of sewers, connect approximately 130 properties to sewer, collect approximately 22,000 gallons per day of wastewater, and remove approximately 2.2 kilograms per day of nitrogen from the Lewis Bay watershed. This particular request is to fund survey and final design and permitting for the project. Construction is anticipated to begin in fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Director Santos. And this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Director Poyant, anybody would like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Close the public comment. I'm sorry, public hearing, and open for council discussion. Counsel Shaughnessy, please.
Just a quick question, since the state is currently working in that area. Will this project disrupt whatever they're doing as far as paving, or are we going to...
No. We have actually gotten funding and appropriations from the council to put sewers under the intersection that's currently being constructed.
Great. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Counsel Shaughnessy. Anyone else? Counsel Star, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. I had a quick question about the facilities on the, at the airport. So, those, are those hangars that don't need, just to the west of Willow Street, they don't need to be hooked up, or?
The airports address that separately.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Star. Anybody else in questions? Director Santos. Move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rapgrusetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
12 yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Shaughnessy, if you, sticking with you, please, if you could. Item number 2023-091.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is old business, subject to public hearing. Roll call, majority vote of the full council. Item number 2023-091. Appropriation order in the amount of $150,000 for the purpose of funding the Warren's Cove Aquaculture Feasibility Study Project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. Ezra.
First and the second, and Director Santos with the rationale, please.
The town's Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan identified Warren's Cove as a potential location for deploying shellfish aquaculture to reduce the nitrogen load from the Marson's Mills River into the Three Bays Estuary. However, in its current condition, Warren's Cove is unsuitable for shellfish habitat. Therefore, removal of sediments via dredging is necessary to improve the area for shellfish aquaculture. The addition of shellfish in this area may help reduce the nitrogen load to the Three Bays Estuary, improve water quality, and potentially reduce the number of properties that need to connect to sewer in the Three Bays watershed. This project is to study and evaluate the feasibility and benefit of dredging Warren's Cove for the purpose of becoming a suitable habitat for shellfish. The study will determine suitable areas and methods for dredging these sediments, and identify permitting needs and costs for construction. If restoration is feasible, then future phases will include the design, permitting, dredging of this area for the purposes of using it for shellfish aquaculture to reduce nitrogen loading to the estuary. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak to this item? And not seeing any. Is there anybody like to participate remotely? Director Poyant.
There is no one on Zoom.
Close the public hearing, and open up for council discussion. Counsel Star, please.
Just a quick question. Are we talking about commercial aquaculture, or is this something that natural resources would use as a grow-out area, or that is an initiative?
That hasn't been decided yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Star. Any other comment, question? Anybody to my left? Okay. Not seeing any. I would move to a vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call, please.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rapgrusetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rapgrusetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
12 yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ludkey, please, if you could. Item number 2023-093.
Thank you. This is old business. It's a public hearing, a roll call, with two-thirds of a vote of the full council. Item 2023-093. Appropriation order in the amount of $200,000 for the purpose of funding the wells, pump stations, treatment plant repair, and upgrade project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. Ezra.
Second.
First and the second. Director Santos with the rationale, please.
Thank you. This project will expand municipal sewer to the north of Route 28 and east of Yarmouth Road. This project will provide municipal sewer to businesses and residences on Old Yarmouth Road, Yarmouth Road, Jokem Road, Bodick Road, Rosary Lane, Fern Dock Street, and Route 28, from Cedar Street to the town line. The Planning and Development Department has identified this area as a region requiring sewer expansion to promote economic development. Businesses and residences in this area are completely dependent on onsite solutions to address their wastewater, which has restricted economic growth in the area. Additionally, the proposed sewer expansion area is entirely located within the Zone 2 to the Hyannis Water Systems Mark drinking water wells, which have experienced contamination over the years. As a result, this project was identified in Phase 1 of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan to address economic development and drinking water protection. This project will install approximately 3.2 miles of sewers, connect approximately 130 properties to sewer, collect approximately 22,000 gallons per day of wastewater, and remove approximately 2.2 kilograms per day of nitrogen from the Lewis Bay watershed. This particular request is to fund survey and final design and permitting for the project. Construction is anticipated to begin in fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Director Santos. And this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Director Poyant, anybody would like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Close the public comment. I'm sorry, public hearing, and open for council discussion. Counsel Shaughnessy, please.
Just a quick question, since the state is currently working in that area. Will this project disrupt whatever they're doing as far as paving, or are we going to...
No. We have actually gotten funding and appropriations from the council to put sewers under the intersection that's currently being constructed.
Great. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Counsel Shaughnessy. Anyone else? Counsel Star, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. I had a quick question about the facilities on the, at the airport. So, those, are those hangers that don't need, just to the west of Willow Street, they don't need to be hooked up, or?
The airport's addressed that separately.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Star. Anybody else in questions? Director Santos. Okay. Move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rapgrusetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
12 yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ludkey, please, if you could. Item number 2023-093.
Thank you. This is old business. It's a public hearing, a roll call, majority vote of the full council. Item 2023-093. Appropriation order in the amount of $200,000 for the purpose of funding the wells, pump
Second.
First and second, and Director Santos with the rationale.
Like the pipe replacement program we just discussed, this annual appropriation request of $200,000 to be funded from enterprise fund reserves continues work that was recommended in the Weston and Sampson's Water System Master Plan. Due to aging facilities and components, starting in 2014, the Hyannis Water Board recommended implementation of an annual program to address major components of the water system infrastructure, including wells, pump stations, treatment plants, building, security, and safety. Funds are allocated to four general areas that include buildings, process control equipment, safety and security, and electrical equipment. In fiscal year 23, the funds for this program were utilized to undertake system-wide repairs and upgrades of the SCADA radio systems and antennas, electrical and process control improvements, and chemical injection control panels at the Mary Dunn Treatment Plant. In fiscal year 24, we propose to continue roof and trim replacements, electrical motor control upgrades, and related design work, SCADA computer and antenna upgrades at the various well buildings and treatment plants. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. And this is a public hearing. Is anybody here that would like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Director Poyant, is there anybody who would like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Thank you. And so I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back for council discussion. Anybody to my left that would like to speak on this item? Anybody to my right? Counsel Starr, please.
Thank you. So this work isn't being done by Veolia?
No.
No?
No.
It's just a, okay.
That's the...
Maintenance upkeep, I mean, this is...
Yeah, that's...
Construction work, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Counsel Starr. Any other questions? To my left and right? Okay, not seeing any. Move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Jenna Murphy, roll call, please.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Huzak.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Starr, please, if you could. Item number 2023-094.
Yes. This is a public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $927,000 for the purpose of funding the Mary Dunn Number One Well Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project as outlined in the fiscal budget 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. This is number 2023-094.
Second.
First and second, Director Santos with the rationale, please.
The Mary Dunn One Storage, Water Storage Tank is in need of some minor repairs and a new coating on the interior and exterior of the tank. This issue was described in the Tank Inspection Report by Advanced Solutions dated March 30th, 2021. This 370,000 gallon tank was built in 1911 and is in good structural condition. It serves together with the 1 million gallon Mary Dunn Two Tank as the distribution water storage facility for the Hyannis Water System. The roof was replaced and site improvement work was completed in 2018. This CIP is a funding request to be able to contract for the rehabilitation and painting project. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. And this is a public hearing. Is anybody like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Would anybody like to speak to this item remotely? Director Poyant.
There is no one on Zoom.
Then I would close the public hearing and bring you back to the Town Council for discussion. Anybody to my left? Anybody to my right? 1911, that's pretty amazing. Hmm, impressive. So with that, not seeing any comment, we move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Jenna Murphy for the roll call.
Counselors. Cullum.
Yes.
Huzak.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes, please.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. And just to mention, the Council Cullum has left the dais. Should say, Madam Vice Chair, Cullum has left the dais. Counsel Starr, if you could, please. Item number 2023-095.
This is appropriation transfer and loan order in the amount of $620,000 for the purpose of funding the new well exploration project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. This is a public hearing, roll call, vote, two-thirds vote of the full council, number 2023-095.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Director Santos with the rationale, please.
Thank you. This project is for funding for the continuation of the new well exploration program to find additional drinking water wells for the town-owned water system. The 2019 New Sources Alternatives Evaluation Report by Weston and Sampson Engineers confirmed the need to find new drinking water wells for their municipal water system. An initial round of test well drilling and sampling was completed on various parcels in the town of Barnstable, and a few preferred parcels were identified. The preferred parcels are the conservation area off Old Jail Lane in Barnstable and the Bridge Creek Conservation Area in West Barnstable. Currently, a second round of test well drilling is planned for this summer to obtain more detailed data to support a well siting decision. The requested funds are needed to supplement existing funding and finalize the planning and permitting phase of the project. This planning and permitting is expected to take approximately five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. Hey, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Anybody would like to speak to the item via remote?
There is no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. I would close the public hearing. Open for council discussion, please. Counsel Ludkey.
Thank you, President Lebec. I just wanted to say, I guess it was last night, I went to the Fire District meeting in West Barnstable. Chris Clark was there, and she and a team had put together a wonderful fact sheet that they handed out to their residents that dovetails with exactly what your project is doing. And as I spoke earlier, you know, with all of our public comment about ponds and all the wonderful projects we have here for the fish renewal and taking care of our water, water is the number one concern of our residents. And I was talking to Chris earlier that I was so impressed with the way they ran their meeting at the Fire District. I went there just to see, because I'm so curious about it. And there were several citizens that asked questions about the well expiration, and I also, I talked to Sam about this too, ahead of the Water Board. And, you know, they have genuine concerns. They're not being antagonistic. They're just a little bit, I think, unsure of what this will be. And Chris's project, and I think what, you know, Mr. Santos is detailing, we're doing this in such a measured and such a scientific way that I think we will alleviate those concerns. I mean, there's a thought that, you know, that's our water, not your water, but it really does have an opportunity to bring the community together. So I love the way that you guys are approaching this, and I like the way that Counselor Clark is bringing her community into it in a very thoughtful way. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Ludkey. Any other council discussion regards that item? Okay, again, closing the public hearing and move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Jenna Murphy for the roll call.
Huzak.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Schnep, please, if you could, help me out. 2023-096.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of old, thank you, old business, requiring a public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote, full council. Item number 2023-096, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $1 million for the purpose of funding the Mary Dunn Four Well Building Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. As written. Thank you. Second.
First and second, and Director Santos with the rationale, please.
This project is for construction of the Mary Dunn Four Well Building, motor and pump driveway, fencing and gates, electric and gas utility hookup, generator, SCADA system, and security system. The Mary Dunn Four Well Building Project funding is needed to finalize the well reactivation project that we began in 2017 as an interim response measure to the PFAS contamination. A number of conditions resulted in the need to revisit the completion of the project, including site conditions, the need for a structure, pandemic era cost escalations, and failure of the state to list the project on the current intended use plan have all made it necessary to make changes to the design prior to bidding. The remaining funds and previously approved appropriations for this purpose will be returned to the Water Supply Reserve Fund as that project was several years old. We felt the most appropriate approach was to close the old project and request funds under a new appropriation for this work that includes the modified scope. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Is anybody like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Director Poyant, is there anyone who would like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing. Any council discussion? Comments? Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Jenna Murphy for the roll call.
Excuse me. Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Huzak.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. Counsel Schnep, if you could, please. Next item, 2023-097.
This is an item of old business, requiring a public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item number 2023-097, appropriation loan order in the amount of $3 million for the purpose of funding the Mary Dunn Road Water Main Replacement Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal 28 Capital Improvement Plan is written. Second.
First and second, Director Santos with the rationale, please.
This appropriation request is to fund the construction of the Mary Dunn Road Water Main Replacement from the intersection with Airport Way to the water storage tanks on the north side of the Route 6 overpass. The Mary Dunn Road Water Main Project funding is needed to replace a 16-inch drinking water transmission pipe built in 1911. This water line connects the water storage tanks with the water production facilities on Mary Dunn Road and delivers water to the Hyannis area. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Director Poyant, please, would there be anybody like to speak to this item remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing. Anybody else would like to speak to this item? Council discussion. Not seeing any. I would move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Jenna Murphy for the vote.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Huzak.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, if you could, please. Item number 2023-098.
Yes, I'd like to open for a public hearing for a roll call, majority vote of the council. Item 2023-098, appropriation order in the amount of $185,235 for the purpose of funding the Town Hall Roof Analysis and Repair Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
Second.
First and second, Director Santos with the rationale, please.
During the masonry cleaning and sealing project at Town Hall in the School Administration Building, cracks were discovered in the masonry on the southwest corner of Town Hall. Further investigation found a new crack in the masonry in the attic that carried through all layers of masonry. This crack indicates movement and separation of masonry elements due to structural forces from the roof. At the time, the condition was documented, but funding was not in place to allow an in-depth analysis and design of corrective measures. Work needs to be undertaken to analyze the movement and to take corrective action. This project will investigate the failure and install structural reinforcing to address the issue. Additionally, the slate roofs on both the Town Hall and School Administration Building are at a point where inspection is required and spot repairs may be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. Is anybody like to participate to this item via remote?
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing and open for council discussion in regards to the roof on the building. Anyone? Okay, not seeing any. Would move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Jenna Murphy for the roll call.
Counselors. Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Huzak.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, is there anyone who would like to raise their hand if they need a break? Let's take a three-minute break, please.[1155.42]
Four.
Celtics.
Yeah.
It's a portable, I heard.
They're in trouble.
Thank you.
Oh, I know.
Hi, Coach.
Yeah, down by one. Like to welcome everybody back to our Brownsville Town Council meeting. Here it is, April 27th, just about 10:30. And we're moving right along. Counselor, I'm sorry, excuse me, Madam Vice President.
Right, you know it.
If you could help me with item number 2023-099.
Yes, item 2023-099. Like to open for a public hearing. It's a roll call vote with two-thirds of the full council. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $1,140,929 for the purpose of funding the school administration building mechanical cooling upgrades project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
We got first and a second. Director Santos for the rationale, please.
Thank you. Given that the school administration building was constructed in 1897, many of its systems are outdated and have reached the end of their useful life. An historic building study reported significant deficiencies in this building. Exterior restoration work has been completed utilizing both CIP and CPA funds. Outdated mechanical work, including replacement of the elevator, remains to be completed for continuity of operations. The original funding request was broken into three stages for phasing and affordability. Phase one, funded in FY '20, was for life safety and emergency mechanical upgrades that are currently underway. Phase two work is in design and includes re-insulating all heat and chill water pipes, install new condensate piping system, replace 45 outdated fan coil units, replace system pumps and controls, update the power distribution system, restroom upgrades and expansion to meet handicap access requirements. This year's request is for phase three improvements, which includes first floor restroom upgrades and expansion to meet handicap access requirements, installation of vestibule doors, elevator replacement, security improvements to controls, slate roof repairs, hazardous materials abatement, replacement of the building backflow preventers and any unforeseen improvements exposed as part of the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. Anybody like to speak to this item? It is a public hearing. And if not, if there's anybody that wants to participate remotely, Director Poyon.
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing and open for council discussion, please, on item number 2023-099. Anyone? Okay, not seeing any, then I would move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call, please.
Counselors. Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shaughnessy, please, if you could. Item number 2023-100.
Thank you, President Lebec. This is an item of old business. Open to a public hearing with a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item number 2023-100. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $1,752,400 for the purpose of funding the Hyannis Youth and Community Center Mechanicals Improvements Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Director Santos for the rationale, please.
The Department of Public Works assumed maintenance responsibilities for the Hyannis Youth and Community Center in October of 2016. Because the facility was experiencing numerous system failures, DPW commissioned a facility condition assessment to develop a comprehensive action plan. This project continues replacement and improvement of worn mechanical systems as discovered under the analysis funded in fiscal year '20, as well as system failures experienced at the building. This project has been divided into multiple years of work, each addressing specific elements of repair as identified by our consultants. Fiscal year '24 funding will replace HVAC units which serves the gym and locker rooms. These units will be replaced with the inclusion of carbon dioxide, demand control and volume dampers. All units will have stainless steel interiors and E-coating on all coils. Supply air will include ultraviolet light sterilization. Any remaining project funds will be used to implement improvements scheduled for following years as deemed appropriate within the scope of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Not seeing any. Moving over to anybody participating remotely.
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing and open for council discussion, please. Anybody like to speak at HYCC? Yes, sir.
Mr. Santos, are the ER V2 units, are those heating and cooling units? Is that what they are? HVAC or?
It's part of the system.
Are they gas powered or electric powered?
I'm going to ask my town architect to...
They're gas.
They're gas? So we can't replace them with electrical heat pump units? I mean, was that considered or just?
Yeah, we did an evaluation of the system and recommendations based by GTD engineers. We've gone through the system and we're actually installing improvements.
Uh-oh, I'm sorry. I'm making... Make a move.
Yeah, we've done, had an... At the very beginning, we did an engineering analysis and we did a cost study on that whole system. And one of the reasons why we even started that was there were concerns about how people felt in the building. So we're actually, as part of this work, we're making certain improvements to the system as well to address that.
So is that a CO2 demand control? What is, can you tell me just quickly?
Yeah, it has to do with the amount of circulation air and the carbon monoxide levels and whether or not it brings outside air into the system or not. Right now, these are just bringing outside air in. So there's no control over that. So for energy efficiency, you want to be able to control how much outside air you're bringing in at a time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Any other comment, question? Oop, Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Lebec. Just curious. The reference in the book here refers under the section fiscal year '27. Will address, the funding will address further stuff. As outlined by the plan completed by Facility Dude in 2018. So who's that?
That's a company that does this work.
Oh, okay, I wanted to thank that dude.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great name. Anyone else? Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
I feel like at some point when we talked about some of the failures of these units, it was suggested that they had not really reached their lifetime in terms of how long they should have lasted. Do we have any availability or opportunity, I don't know, to recover some of this cost via the insurance or anything like that?
No, I think that the failures mostly are kind... What we specified in some cases was not things that would last as long in this environment and that's why I mentioned specifically the coatings that we're using. And then maintenance over time may not have been what it should be or what we're doing now. And I don't have details on that. But currently, we have annual maintenance contracts. Our Facility Dude helps us with everything that has to be done on every part of the system. Like every week, it gives us work orders. So we're on top of that now and we anticipate in the future that we will get long life out of the systems we're installing.
They just don't make stuff like they did 100 years ago, that's for sure.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Anyone else comment in regards to this item? Not seeing any. If we can move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Staying with you, Counselor Shaughnessy, please. Item number 2023-101.
Thank you, President Lebec. This is old business, subject to public hearing and a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item number 2023-101. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $400,000 for the purpose of funding the Department of Public Works Office Administration Building Expansion Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan as read.
Second.
First and second Director Santos for the rationale, please.
This project is for construction of the expansion and reorganization of office areas at the Captain Robert L. O'Brien Public Works Administration Building. This building also houses the Highway Division offices. This work is necessary to accommodate the additional staff being brought on to implement the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Additionally, it will provide restroom expansion for our growing female workforce. The expansion into existing and underutilized garage areas will include administrative and Highway Division managerial offices, employee lockers, showers and toilet rooms within the current garage area of the existing building. Reorganization of the existing office area will increase engineering workstations, expand restrooms and related elements. This project continues renovation and expansion work to meet departmental space needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here for the public like to speak to the item? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone who'd like to participate remotely? Director Poyon.
There is no one for this item.
Thank you. And we will close the public hearing and open for council discussion. Looking to my right, anyone have any questions in regards to this item? Looking to my left, anyone? Not seeing any. Let's move to a vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, roll call, please.
Counselors. Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. Counselor Mendez, if you could, please. Item number 2023-102.
Thank you, President Lebec. This is item number 2023-102. It's old business. Appropriation order in the amount of $3,750,000 for the purpose of funding the public roads maintenance project as outlined in fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan. So a public hearing, roll call majority, two-thirds vote of the full council.
Second.
First and a second. Director Santos for the rationale, please.
The town's road system is comprised of more than 700 roads totaling 260 miles. Roadway systems are in a constant state of deterioration and for that reason, adequate maintenance and reconstruction where necessary is essential to preserve this major capital asset. Analysis performed through the pavement management program shows a significant backlog of needed public road repairs. In addition, the town has a backlog of more than 250 locations where drainage improvements are required to protect public safety and prevent potential property damage. Recurring intense storms over the past several years have highlighted additional areas requiring storm drain attention. This program is designed to combat the progressive deterioration of the town's roadway assets and provide stormwater management system construction and repairs. As you can see in the slides, depending on physical conditions and analysis utilizing the town's pavement management program, the repairs may include one of several different approaches, including full-depth reconstruction, asphalt overlay, milling and paving, applying a chip seal surface layer or crack sealing. In addition to surface repairs, improvement projects typically include installation of upgraded drainage systems, curbing and sidewalks where practicable. Other program elements include traffic calming, ADA accessibility, engineering permitting, design inspection and materials testing. The final slide exemplifies the adage famously penned by Benjamin Franklin in the 18th century that "an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." The graph shows that road deterioration occurs very rapidly between 10 and 15 years of road life. If we can take preventive measures before that point of rapid deterioration, our costs will be a fraction of the costs of full reconstruction. So we are able to provide a higher condition of roadway at a lower cost. Upon completion of the fiscal year 2023 program, we will have undertaken the following work. Asphalt overlay of Bristol Avenue, Count Seat Street, Chestnut Street, Crooked Pond Road, George Street, Hampshire Avenue, Kent Lane, Mary Alice Lane, Ocean Avenue and St. Catherine Avenue in Hyannis. Mill and overlay of portions of Main Street and Old Falmouth Road in Marston's Mills. Mill and overlay of a portion of South County Road in Marston's Mills in Osterville. Mill and overlay of a portion of Old Stage Road in Centerville and West Barnstable and a portion of Santuitt Newtown Road in Kettuitt and install 28 drainage systems on various other roads. In fiscal year '24, we propose road rehabilitation work on Dale Avenue, Gosnoll Street and Ocean Avenue in Hyannis, Santuitt Newtown Road and Marston's Mills, Parker Road and Eel River Road in Osterville and Cedar Street in West Barnstable. Other roads may be substituted if necessary due to accelerated deterioration rates, unexpected damages, opportunities to address certain roads with other funding or other factors. Drainage improvements are planned on Turn Lane in Centerville, West Main Street in Hyannis, Mockingbird Lane in Marston's Mills, Bayview Circle and Spice Lane in Osterville. Smaller drainage projects, chip sealing, crack sealing and preventive maintenance are also planned for various roads townwide to extend the road's service life. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Not seeing any new additions to the room. Is there anybody like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing, open up for council discussion. Anybody want to talk about paving roads? Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Lebec. Just want to say my thanks to DPW for this comprehensive job. I've heard great comments from the roadwork done in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Starr, please.
Thank you. My question is on the red graph. Which ones do we do in-house? Like the top three? Or? Any of them? No.
Not on that.
Okay.
You know, we do potholes, repair.
Just smaller stuff, okay. I wasn't sure.
That would all be contracted.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Anybody else on to my right here that would like to speak on this item?
Okay.
Not seeing any. Let's move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, roll call.
Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr. Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mendez, if you could, please. Item number 2023-103.
Sure thing, Mr. President. This is old business. This is item 2023-103. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $270,000 for the purpose of funding the monitoring and management plan for freshwater ponds project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan. So refer to a public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full council.
Second.
First and a second. And Director Santos for the rationale, please.
Many of the town's ponds are impaired. Water quality issues can cause pond closures and are unpalatable to residents and visitors who utilize the ponds for swimming, boating, fishing and other recreational activities. Several citizens groups have approached the town looking for solutions to poor water quality in freshwater ponds, in particular from cyanobacteria. In many cases, the specific causes unknown or not fully quantified preventing the town from understanding which sources need to be remedied in order to restore the pond's health. Through these management plan reports, the town aims to take a holistic approach to understanding the issues that impair our freshwater resources and ultimately how to appropriately manage them based on their unique characteristics. This project will fund the continuation of the Pond and Lake Management Plan Program, which will allow the town to better understand nutrient sources that impair our freshwater ponds and to recommend solutions. Each management plan is developed in a two-phase cycle. The first phase consists of monitoring all nutrient sources, including in-pond water quality, sediment nutrient release, stormwater inputs, groundwater inputs, dissolved oxygen, phytoplankton composition and stream inputs where applicable. The second phase involves the development of a management plan report that will be presented following the completion of the monitoring, recommended solutions and cost estimates for restoring pond water quality and mitigating algae plumes. To date, the Shubal Pond, Long Pond, Marston's Mills and Lovell's Pond management plans have been funded along with continued sample collection in the spring and fall at 25 great ponds through the Pond and Lake Stewards Program, also known as PALS. It is envisioned that this will be a recurring project for developing pond and lake management plans, which will ultimately be used to guide the town in future management and implementation of solutions for its freshwater resources. Fiscal year '24 funds are anticipated to be used to perform water quality monitoring and development of a management plan report for Quocket Lake, Beers's Pond and Gooseberry Pond. These three ponds must be performed together because they are hydrologically connected. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Not seeing anybody in the room. However, is there anybody that would like to participate remotely?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. And I would close the public hearing. Open for council discussion, please. More water talk. Counselor Schnapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to give my whole heart support for this program and I believe Shubal Pond received its treatment recently?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I would say the same. I wholeheartedly support this. We do a great job. And Amber and crew and everybody else involved really a valiant effort to try to move forward and prioritize. So, thank you. Anybody else? Discussion? Not seeing anyone. Move to a vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, please.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Atzlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Grecetti.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Thank you. Ludke.
Yes.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. And we already did item number 104, so moving on, Council Cuzack, if you could please, 2023-105.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business, referring to public hearing, roll call, majority vote, full council. This is item 2023-105, an appropriation order in the amount of $95,000 for the purpose of funding the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4, project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 to 2028 capital improvement plan.
Second.
First and the second, Director Santos for the rationale, please.
The United States Environmental Protection Agency has identified disturbance of land and polluted stormwater runoff as major sources of water pollution. Regulation of illicit connections and discharges to the municipal storm drain system is necessary for the protection of the town of Barnstable's water bodies and groundwater resources, and to safeguard the public health, safety, and welfare of the natural resources of the town. This project will fund multiple studies, plans, and reports which are required for the town to maintain compliance with the recent Environmental Protection Agency National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Phase II Municipal Storm... I'm sorry, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems, otherwise known as MS4 permit. Previous funding accomplished the following: continue the update of the storm system mapping, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and illicit discharge and detection evaluation updates; continue dry weather outfall sampling; phosphorus report for Lovell's Pond; regulatory assessment for low-impact development and green infrastructure; inventory municipal properties for best management plan retrofits. Fiscal year 2024 CIP requirements will focus on continuing to update stormwater mapping and investigations; phosphorus source ID report continuation for Lovell's Pond; updated notice of intent; best management practice design for Lovell's Pond; system vulnerability source assessment; assistance with illegible discharge and detection evaluation training and adoption of stormwater regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing, not seeing anybody in the room. However, do we have anybody that looks to participate remotely?
We do not.
Okay, then I would close the public hearing, open for council discussion, please. Anyone? Okay. Not seeing any, that would move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, roll call, please.
Counselor... Excuse me. Counselors. Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Council Cuzack, if you could please, item number 2023-106.
Yes, Mr. President. This is Old Business, public hearing, roll call, vote, majority of the full council, and appropriation order in the amount of $175,000 for the purpose of funding the raised crosswalks in Kootawatt project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 to 2028 capital improvement plan. This is item 2023-106.
Second.
First and the second, Director Santos, the rationale, please.
This request is for the installation of a raised pedestrian crosswalk at Main Street and Old Shore Road in Kootawatt. Main Street is the main thoroughfare through Kootawatt. Pedestrian crossings on Main Street can be hazardous, particularly at the intersection of Main Street and Old Shore Road. Raised pedestrian crossings will make individuals entering the roadways more visible to motorists and therefore improve pedestrian safety. The Kootawatt Civic Association has strongly endorsed the requested improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here like to speak on this item? And if not, do we have anyone that would like to participate remotely?
There is no one for this item.
Okay, thank you. I would close the public hearing and open for council discussion, please. Council Rap Grissette, please.
Thank you, Dan, for putting this on.
Very good. Thank you. It's worked in a lot of other villages, so... I should say, a couple of other villages, so... Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any, I would move to a vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, for the roll call, please.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item of Old Business, Madam Vice Chair, item number 2023-107.
Yes, I'll open for a public hearing, item number 2023-107, appropriation order in the amount of $131,500 for the purpose of funding the design of the Hawes Avenue culvert reconstruction project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024-fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
First and the second, Director Santos, the rationale, please.
Sinkholes underneath and adjacent to Hawes Avenue have been continually worsening over the years due to an old and degraded culvert that conveys water from Hyannis Harbor to an up gradient salt marsh. The culvert is in need of repair or replacement in order to prevent further degradation of the roadway and/or catastrophic failure of the roadway. This project will complete the evaluation permitting and design necessary to repair or replace the failing culvert underneath Hawes Avenue in Hyannis. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. This is a public hearing. Is anybody looking to participate remotely?
There is not.
Anybody would like to speak in the room? If not, then I would close the public hearing and open for council discussion. Another culvert. Okay, not seeing any, I would move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, for the roll call.
Counselors. Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. And I would entertain a motion to go past 11 o'clock, just so we can get through these DPW items.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
First and the second, and can we just do a signify by saying aye, obviously? Right? Please signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Obstain? Okay. Seems to be unanimous begrudgingly. Yes, that's fine. I accept that wholeheartedly, yes. Council Neary, please, if you could, item number 2023-108.
This is Old Business, for a public hearing, requiring a roll call, majority vote. It's item number 2023-108. It's the appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $492,270 for the purpose of funding the Hyannis Golf Course Turf Maintenance Equipment Replacement Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 through 2028 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
First and the second, and we have Intern Director of Leisure Services, Chris Cannella, with us for the rationale.
Good evening, President Levec. Good evening, Town Council. This request is to replace and acquire integral golf course maintenance equipment at Hyannis Golf Course. As listed on the slide, most of the precision or reel type mowing equipment is over 10 years old, the turf applicator is 15 years old, and the core aerification and debris sweeper is over 20 years of old. The new equipment we are requesting is required to support increased cultural practices that are critical to the continued success of the environmental sustainable land care management program and maintaining premium conditions. If you see these slides, this represents some of the equipment being replaced. Of note, the hour meter slide, 6,074, and I've had a bunch of engineers and architects talking in front of me, and I understand hour meters and smaller things, but average life expectancy of this equipment is 3,000 hours. And if you translate that into miles, this greens mower has 364,000 miles traversing up and down hills on a golf course, so it's pretty impressive. And with that being said, I'd like to recognize Henry O'Shaughnessy, Golf Course Facility Technician at Hyannis Golf Course, and Don Peterson of Old Barnstable for their dedication and professionalism keeping all this stuff going. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the room like to speak on this item? And if not, do we have anybody like to participate remotely? Any avid golfers out there?
We do not.
And so with that, I would close the public hearing and ask if there's anybody who would like to participate in council discussion. Council Atzlis, please.
Thank you. What happens to the old equipment that you're replacing?
Some of it is repurposed and put out part of the proposal process, they will take it back as a trade.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, for the roll call, please.
Counselors. Cuzack.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Thank you, twelve yes.
Thank you. And moving on to the next item, Council Neary, if you could please, 2023-109.
Yes, sir. This is Old Business, requiring a public hearing and roll call, majority vote of the full council. It's item number 2023-109, appropriation order in the amount of $82,561 for the purpose of funding the Old Barnstable Fairgrounds irrigation sprinkler replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 through 2028 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
First and the second, Director Cannella for the rationale, please.
Thank you. This request is to purchase 300 replacement irrigation sprinklers, PVC, and electrical connections, and individualized yardage markers throughout the Old Barnstable Fairgrounds Golf Course. There are over 700 sprinkler heads on the golf course, and approximately 400 have been replaced since the original opening of the golf course over 30 years ago. These replacement sprinklers are superior and provide improved precipitation rates, increased coverage, and assist in water conservation. Purchasing and installing the new sprinklers will also reduce costs associated with purchasing obsolete replacement parts, reduce labor for repairs, and allow staff to focus on other maintenance practices. The new sprinklers will be installed by current staff, and we anticipate completion of the installation within three years. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here want to speak to this item? And if not, do we have anybody like to participate remotely, please?
There is no one for this item.
Then I would close the public hearing and open for council discussion, and I see Council Rap Grissette's hand raised.
Mark Milne, if you could just tell us how much is in the Gulf Enterprise Fund,
Gulf Enterprise, just over 2.2 million.
Thank you for that, Director Milne. Thank you for that. Council Rap Grissette, anybody else want to speak to this item? Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy, please, for the roll call.
Counselors. Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cuzack.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Council Rap Grissette, if you could help me out, please, item number 2023-110.
This is Old Business, public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full council, item 2023-110, appropriation order in the amount of $161,757 for the purpose of funding the Old Barnstable Fairgrounds Kart Barn Roof Replacement Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
First and the second, and Director Santos, the rationale, please.
The existing asphalt roof on the Gulf Kart Barn at Old Barnstable Fairgrounds is in a state of failure, and it needs to be replaced. The large hole was temporarily repaired, but new areas of shingled lamination have begun and continue to resurface. The roof will be replaced in kind with lifetime warranted asphalt shingles. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. Anyone like to speak on this item via, obviously, either in the room or via remotely? Director Poynon.
There is no one.
Okay, then I would close the public hearing and open up for council discussion, please. Roof replacement, Councilor Cuzack, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just was wondering if, in consideration of a new roof, opportunity to possibly put in solar, didn't know if it was ever considered.
Town Architect Mark Marinaccio.
We hadn't been asked to review that, but what we found in some of these older buildings is that they're really not designed to take the additional load for solar panels. But if that were something you wanted us to do, we could take a look at that while we do this and see if it's able to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council Starr, please.
Thank you. Thank you. So, it's an asphalt roof on a fairly simple building, and we're talking $13,000 for design and permitting? I don't want to be picky.
So, there's also some trim work, and there's some doors that need to be repaired on there. There's some analysis of the trusses that were damaged when they patched the original hole. So, it's some work to do. Take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Starr. Any other questions? Not seeing any? I would move to a vote, please. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy.
Counselors. Levesque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.[1395.15]